It's dropping. It's not. It's dropping. Or checking. You can.
All right, I have nine oh one on the old cellphone. Computer say eight fifty-nine for the record. So we'll call this meeting to order. It's a Teler County Board of Supervisors and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We'll begin today with item one, Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'll start with Supervisor Vanderpool.
I did, I was coming, Mr. Chair. I, uh, for some reason my granite is... Isn't completely updated yet, I apologize. So, real quick, I wanted to talk about a few things that are coming up. If my, I am gonna need this to load, but last week we had a California Transportation Commission hearing that was held in Fresno, and the CTC took recommendations from Caltrans that basically led to the uproar of the San Joaquin Valley and fear that we were going to be losing Highway ninety-nine widening funding, and I still have that fear. At the meeting last week, they did bring an updated proposal, which was progress in the right direction, but I don't believe that it goes far enough at all. I don't think that we have any time certain or any kind of guarantee, formal guarantee, that we're actually looking for to feel comfortable. And so, that being said, we are going to continue to advocate and push for additional reassurance from Caltrans. I think the CTC understands and is with us, and they are very supportive, but I have to see Caltrans hear their recommendations and make the changes we need before I will breathe a little bit more easily. Few things that I wanted to go over that are upcoming. It's gonna, I've got a long list of public meetings that I want to make sure that the public is aware of between now and our next board meeting. Tomorrow, I have a meeting of the Teler County Employees Retirement Association Retirement Board. That meeting starts at eight thirty and is at the Retirement Board Office. First Five has a Technical Advisory Committee meeting at the First Five office on the twenty-first at nine AM. This weekend, on Saturday, the Teler Hospital Foundation is having their annual Festival of Trees event, always very, very well attended, and raises a lot of money for the Teler Hospital Foundation. Look forward to a great event, it's at the Teler Memorial Building at six o'clock. Then, next week, actually, on Tuesday, the International Agri Center Board will be having their monthly meeting at four PM at the International Agri Center. CSAC will be having its annual, California State Association of California Counties is having its annual conference, the first week of December in San Francisco. I will be very careful to not step on human fecal matter or get any needles in my feet as I'm walking the streets of San Francisco. On the ninth of December, at the Ag Commissioners Auditorium, TCAG, the Teler County Association of Governments, will be having their monthly meeting, but it will also be a workshop where local agencies get to showcase projects they've accomplished in collaboration with TCAG over the last year. And then, on the tenth, which is Tuesday, the Teler Mental Health Department will be showcasing a permanent housing project, permanent supportive housing project in Teleri. Finally, this ribbon cutting is here, I know there have been different delays and things along the way, but really looking forward to seeing a permanent supportive housing project located in Teleri to help serve the Teleri County mental health consumer. I think that's gonna be great. There will be a ribbon cutting at nine AM, and that facility is located at Inyo in Sacramento in Teleri. On December tenth at three o'clock, First Five will be having their annual Holiday Open House. And then, on December eleventh at eight thirty AM, there will be a meeting of the Teler County Employees Retirement Association. On that Wednesday, in that afternoon, there will be a LAFCO meeting here in these chambers at two o'clock. And then, on December twelfth at ten o'clock here in these chambers, will be a First Five Commission meeting. I'm almost there. And then, on Thursday, December twelfth at eleven thirty, ResCom will be having their annual Christmas luncheon. That is their company luncheon, and they donate all proceeds raised from the event to the Salvation Army. That's an incredible event, and they have raised so much money for the Salvation Army over the years of that luncheon. It's always a great event. And then, on December sixteenth, the day before our next board meeting, there will be a Greater Keweeah Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was actually something that's gonna be happening this week, I just didn't have a chance to put it in my notes. I just got the email last night. Congressman TJ Cox will be holding a Medicare workshop at the Early Mart Senior Center this Friday from nine AM to twelve PM for any constituent who's interested in going to learn about Medicare and needs any help signing up for those services. That is available this Friday. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving as well.
Supervisor Shecklian?
Signing in. Something happened. Can you do my microphone for me? Thank you. All right. Well, last Thursday, what's his name down there? Supervisor Townsend and I, along with staff from our Resource Management Agency, attended the Central Valley American Public Works Awards, where Teleri County received two awards. One was in District Three, I'll let Dennis tell you about the other, but that was the Avenue two eighty Caldwell Widening Project, so that was very nice. Thank you to all the staff that worked very hard on that. Got back from that and attended the Elections Open House, which was pretty incredible. The technology that's coming to Teleri County to help with our elections process is quite amazing, so I'm looking forward to that. Tonight, I will be attending the Visalia Chamber of Commerce After Hours at the Prestige Assisted Living Facility, and no, I'm not reserving a bed yet, Pete. Also, tomorrow, we have our Homeless Task Force, along with the City of Visalia, will be having a public process of a city traffic plan, so if you live in Visalia and want to have a say in the traffic plan for Visalia, I'd encourage you to attend that meeting, I believe it's at five thirty tomorrow. Friday, I'll be traveling to Merced for my San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting, which is the San Joaquin Amtrak Administration meeting. Saturday night, I will be involved in a murder mystery for the Visalia Rotary Foundation. Surprise, surprise, I'm a suspect. What do you think, Sheriff? And other than that, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. The Monday after Thanksgiving, the big Visalia Candy Cane Lane Parade will be taking place down Main Street, and I think Parade One is all shined up and ready to go, Chief?
Absolutely.
All right. And then I also will be attending the annual CSAC Conference in San Francisco. That's it.
Very good. Supervisor Valero?
Good morning, Teleri County. A lot has occurred since we last met, and so on November the sixth, I was invited to provide a keynote to students to the Be Future Ready Conference for sophomores at Dinuba Unified. I had the opportunity to discuss my journey and encourage students to press forward. The following day, I attended the Sustainable Corridor Meeting, discussing potential project and enhancement ideas along the ninety-nine, one ninety-eight, sixty-five, and one ninety. I also attended the Early Learning Needs in Teleri County, along with Supervisor Vanderpool, where we learned about comprehensive services going on in early education and utilizing the tools needed to build overall success in schools and throughout life. That evening, I attended the Donning's Banquet, an organization that exists to make sure women and men are provided with the caring support they need pre and post pregnancy. So it was a great banquet overall. On Friday of that week, I attended the Teleri Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Awards Night. Winners for that evening included Southern California Edison Community Involvement, Habitat for Humanity Nonprofit of the Year, small business went to Recovery Credit Repair, medium business went to International Agri Center, large business was the Tahachi Palace, and then Man of the Year was Tony Corio from CSAT, Community Services and Employment Training, and then Woman of the Year was Debbie Landers out of Porterville, Porterville for Arborn, Arborn, is how you say it? Airborne. Well, and then on Veterans Day, I had the opportunity to speak at the Veterans Day Ceremony in Sultana at the Alta District Cemetery. Great presentations from our heroes, student groups, and community. The following day, Tuesday, I spoke to the Dinuba Women's Club at the Dinuba Golf Course. Last Wednesday, I participated in the Playground Meeting for the Community of London, excited to say that they will be getting a playground from the company Kaboom, and Kaboom will be coming out on December the second to make sure that community participation and the company will be working together. So the London Hodges Community Center will be getting that new playground, and it will be installed, along with residents from the area. And so, for those of you that are interested, the groundbreaking will take place on Monday, December second, and will conclude with the grand opening ceremony on Saturday, December seventh at one PM. So if any of my colleagues would like to attend, I welcome you. It was just great to see the community come together and were able to raise in excess of twenty thousand dollars, especially in an unincorporated community that doesn't have a lot of resources. So when community comes together, things happen. I believe we continue to make great progress in the county, and I was very much encouraged by our Elections Department with the new software and voting system, as was already mentioned. Great turnout for the open house, and I just want to give kudos to Michelle Baldwin and her team for doing that, and spearheading a fourth, in terms of advancing our elections office in that regard. Thereafter, I attended a soft opening of the New York Pizza and Grill in Dinuba, and in the evening, I attended the McKeller Farm Bob's World Board Meeting, where we discussed future improvements to Bob's property with the addition of an education and activities complex for student engagement and learning, so something similar to Casa de Fruta, as well as other kind of places of activities and entertainment. Lastly, the Sequoia Community Center Open House was very, very exciting. Many residents from Badger, Pinehurst, and Merrimonte were there to experience a new center devoted to the people of this mountain region. So for many of you that don't know, the school board was able to hand over the keys to a group of community members that started a nonprofit and are now taking use of the center and making it a community-wide impact. This center will include programs like local history, fitness classes, Red Cross CPR, first aid training, game night, internet cafe, library project, needlework crafts, digital photography, and farmer's market, and much, much more. And with that, I turn it back over to our chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Townsend?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Just a few things to report on, back on the seventh, over in Porterville, we opened up the, Teler County Mental Health opened up the Porterville Long-Term Supportive Housing space for sixteen people to be able to live and have the permanent long-term supportive housing, a really good addition to the city and a good addition to the beds that are available in the county. As Supervisor Vanderpool mentioned, we have Teleri coming up right on the heels of that. So I was happy to go over there, take a tour, and to speak a little bit about the need and about how that was filling that need. And then afterwards, ran over to Porterville College, and they had a special, Porterville College salutes our veterans, and had a nice lunch with some of the veterans there on campus, and were able to hear from, our own Roland Hill was the keynote speaker that day, so it was nice to visit with Roland and his wife. And also, the same day, that was a busy day, the East Tulie Groundwater Sustainability Agency met. Our groundwater sustainability plan, or GSP, is out right now for public comment. I think the last day is right about December sixteenth, we'll be having the public hearing to take the final review of the comments that we've been receiving and to get, put the final touches on that before being turned into the state. On the eighth, met with the City of Porterville, I have a monthly meeting with the mayor and the city manager, just to touch base and to talk about things that are overlapping between those two jurisdictions, and as always, we had a really productive meeting and brainstormed a few things, how we can help each other with things that are coming up in the future. On the ninth, had a great time. Chairman Crocker and I sponsored a team for the Our Heroes Dreams Golf Tournament up at River Island, and so we were able to put together a team. Chairman couldn't make it, so we backfilled the team and played, and no Supervisor Shecklian, I did not hit anyone with my golf ball that day. That day, I didn't hit anybody. But our team actually played pretty well, but raised a lot of money for this organization that supports veterans and got to mix and mingle with a lot of veterans that day, and I was able to also speak and pray for the opening ceremony that evening. And later that evening was the Heritage Foundation Dinner out at Porterville Fair, that's the foundation that raises money to keep the Porterville Fair alive and going, and it's a real vibrant organization. A lot of people coming up through the ranks, younger people coming up, and so it should be, it should bode well for the future of the Porterville Fair. And on the eleventh, along with most everybody, we're out celebrating Veterans Day. In this case, I was able to use Parade One, thank you Chief Norman for that, and he was unable to attend, probably out to, probably putting out fires somewhere, I would imagine. So Ronnie Castillo was there as our driver, and when they announced several times that we were riding on Parade One with Chief Norman, Ronnie waved his hand, so you can, you can talk to him about that later.
He's the mayor.
Yeah, that's right, he is. Had a great time there, really good turnout over in Porterville to support the veterans' parade. As Supervisor Shecklian mentioned, on the fourteenth, went up to Fresno for the American Public Works Association Awards Lunch with a lot of the RMA staff, and along with engineers that had helped on a lot of these projects. Supervisor Shecklian mentioned the two eighty project, and the one that I was there specifically was the Bear Creek Bridge Project over Rancharria Creek, just a beautiful bridge, it's been completed there, also won the award, so congratulations to RMA for putting all that together and on the bridge improvement program in general. And on that evening, on the fourteenth, I held a town hall in Springville, probably one of the best-attended town hall meetings that I've had all year, and thank you to all of you that came out, all of you staff that came out to help with that and to field those questions. I think it went really well, and we had a, we definitely had a full house, and thanks again to Carrie for putting that all together for us. The next morning, along with the CAO and I, had a brief meeting with the Eagle Mountain Casino folks from Tulie River Tribe, just for some clarifications on the MOU that we're currently undertaking and getting some updates and clarifications on the roads around the area, so that's coming quickly to a conclusion, I think. Today, we'll be having, the chairman and I will be having a meeting with the Forest Service and the Great Basin Institute later this afternoon, talk a little bit about forest management and how we can all partner to just do an even better job than what we're doing right now and how we can combine resources, personnel, to get some things done that need to be done in our beautiful forests. Tomorrow, speaking of that, have a meeting in Hot Springs with Brian Thoburn from Southern California Edison regarding some issues that have come up. They're doing a lot, obviously, of vegetation management at this time, getting trees away from the lines and hardening their lines right now, and so, of course, there's some conflict with some people that like some of the trees that are needing to be cleared or trimmed, and so we're going to go up there and just have a session where we can brainstorm how to do that, and I'm just going to help be a representative of the constituents up there as Edison and their tree contractors get together. And on the twenty-first, I'll be speaking out at Harmony Magnet Academy to the students, I'll be teaching a class out there, just gonna be talking about, it's an engineering pathway in the schools, be talking a little bit about architecture, but also about volunteerism, about Habitat for Humanity, which I'm a part of, and I get to throw a little bit in about county government now, so speaking to the students. And then on the twenty-first also is Ag Business Luncheon over in Porterville, always a great attendance there, good time to network. And later that day, be going over for a check presentation to CRV Medical Center for a new state-of-the-art MRI machine that'll be going in over there at the Cancer Treatment Center that both the CRV Foundation, which I'm a part of, and also the Rotary Club, which I'm a part of, has, have put some funds together to help them with the purchase of this machine. And I saw a presentation on it, and it is truly state-of-the-art, will be the first ones in the area, anywhere close to the area, to have this type of MRI, and so it will be a boon to, I think, the whole area. And then Supervisor Vanderpool and others have already mentioned the CSAC Conference coming up and the Teler County Association of Governments, and with that, I'll just say, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, enjoy your time with family and friends. Thank you.
Supervisor Valero, did you have something else to?
Just very quickly.
Your mic's off.
Yeah. Very quickly, I do want to thank our Sheriff's Department. Last week, we did have someone missing from the Cutler Rosie area, Presentacion Quinde, and so I just want to thank our sheriffs for being at the forefront and bringing her back home. So thank you so much for those efforts.
Very good. Just highlight a few things from the past couple of weeks. Last week, on Veterans Day, there was a highway dedication ceremony for Colonel Young up in Sequoia National Park. Colonel Young was the first African-American National Park Superintendent in the country, and the amount of work that he was able to do really in one year up in the park was pretty tremendous. He was also the first Colonel in the US Army that was African-American, and so he just had a great storied career. It was great to learn more about his career and his legacy and how that impacted Teleri County, and happy to be there. Assemblyman Mathis wrote legislation to rename that portion of the highway after Colonel Young and was president for that, along with descendants of Colonel Young and others from really all over the country. We had former National Parks Director there and some folks that had been highlighted on Ken Burns's National Park Documentary, so it was a pretty special event to be a part of. Elections Open House went great, and so kudos to our Elections Department. I think that's, the new technology really provides me with a great deal of confidence as far as the integrity of our elections and some of the, and as well as being more efficient with getting results out and making sure that we're tabulating everything properly. Last week also, there was, I attended RCRC Executive Committee, and the one thing I want to highlight that was a little bit concerning, although not anything major, but I just, there was discussion about expanding membership, and the talk became somewhat of, we, we, the great, the group was not interested in losing the identity of small rural counties, and while on the face, it doesn't sound like a bad idea, my concern is, is that we're one of the largest of the counties, and so are we looked at necessarily in a bad light because we're almost half a million? And so that was something of just concern that I, that I think is, that needs to be, you know, kept in line, and everyone's like, well, we don't want you to, you know, be gone or whatever, but that was essentially the discussion. So the Executive Committee voted to place a cap on membership at six hundred thousand, and so the, granted, everyone that was already a member would be grandfathered, so that wouldn't, no one would be getting kicked out if somebody, you know, moved to that level, but it's basically, the message from my standpoint was, we're okay with where we're at right now, we don't need anymore. And really, what this came about is San Bernardino County was been interested in being a member of RCRC, and granted, there are over two million people, but a vast majority of their lands are public lands, they have national forests, they have, you know, they're a huge county as far as size, and so, so they have a lot in common, but ultimately, that was the recommendation that'll go to the full board in December. At the, Supervisor Vanderpool mentioned the CTC hearing, I thought it was great that we had a large contingent from not only our county, but we also had many others from other counties. Madera County was there, they had a direct impact, but there were other counties that were there just in solidarity too. So Fresno County spoke, even though they didn't have a direct impact as far as it was, there was no projects being discussed that were in their county, but there is a direct impact as far as goods movement, as well as Merced was there, Stanislas, San Joaquin, Kern, and so there was, I don't know that there was one county that was missed out of our region that was present, so that was great. We did have Ted Smalley and Ben Giuliani and I had a meeting with some Caltrans staff after the hearing was over, and I'm very optimistic that not only will we get everything back that was recommended be taken away, but that Ted is also working on other things that are somewhat related, but not exactly related, to get even more money for Teleri County. So out of what might have been a very bad thing, I think Ted's working his magic to make it a great thing. So I'm optimistic, but I agree with Supervisor Vanderpool, until we see the final in the December recommendation, then, you know, it's still, it's still making sure that we apply pressure and make sure that they, that the California Transportation Commission knows that this is very important to our region. And then today, as Supervisor Townsend mentioned, we have a meeting with Great Basin Institute. Great Basin Institute has a master stewardship agreement with the Sequoia National Forest, so it was recommended that we have a discussion with them to see how we might partner in their existing framework to look at doing projects and making sure that our forests are healthy. So this is a great step, I'm really looking forward to that meeting and hoping that we can make sure that we keep our communities protected that are up the hill, that we protect our giant sequoias, our watersheds, our air quality, and that we can get some, get some good discussion and some future projects out of this meeting. And lastly, I'll just thank everyone for being here and have a great Thanksgiving next week. We'll go on to item two, present a proclamation recognized in Teleri County Sheriff's Office, Youth Girls Basketball League, and I believe Supervisor Shecklian has a proc for them.
I do, and I believe Chair Pedro and the outside aisles will come up and do a little thing. I do. And I believe Sheriff Drow and Lieutenant Lyles will come up and do a little precursor to this and then we'll have the team come up.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board, as well as our CAO and County Council. Good morning. It's good to see everybody. I haven't had an opportunity to be in front of the board in quite some time, but it's always nice to be in front of the board to tell something positive, for sure. We recreated in the Sheriff's Department, what's called the Youth Development Program. And I knew to identify someone who really would pick up that torch and carry it into where it's becoming today. And it's super exciting to see. So many stories that I could tell you. We have not enough time today, but we'll come back to the board another time to tell you how this has really taken off and what we're doing to impact the communities of Tulare County in such a positive way. But today, we want to be able to recognize our youth development traveling basketball team, our girls' team. I'll tell a couple real quick stories about my lieutenant, Harold Lyles, behind me.
I asked him, Harold.
Yeah. So, we, we have developed a football league, a basketball league, a bowling league, and we're currently working on a soccer league, which is zero out-of-pocket expense to the Sheriff's Office, no money out-of-pocket to bottom-line budget expenses. That's good ears to the CAO. And we had over 250 kids at our football league. We had NFL football players come out at the kickoff opening ceremonies in Ivanhoe. We had parents talking about how they wouldn't be able to afford the program. It's free to all parents, free to all kids. Our bowling league is the same way. Our basketball league is the same way, which goes into the story Supervisor Sheckleyan that she's asked me to tell. I find it a good story. So Harold Lyles, he's very much into sports and he has a lot of connections making big things happen. And we're so proud of him and we'll tell more about him later. But I was walking through the hallway. I get briefings all through the day as I go through the different divisions. And I'm walking through the hallway and I see Harold, he's excited to tell me a story. He says, Sheriff, I have to tell you, we have big buses out front. We have all of our basketball players. They're getting ready to head down to an LA Clippers basketball game. I said, Harold, that's so exciting. I'm glad to hear about that. He says, yes. He says, the Clippers are so excited about what we're doing here in Tulare County with our youth development. They've, they've asked us to, they're going to present us with a presentation of award and recognition on youth development at halftime. I said, wow, that's exciting. Harold got real quiet. And he kind of stepped back for a minute. He goes, I guess I should have told you that before we're hopping on the bus to head out to the LA Clippers. I said, Harold, I sure would have liked to have been there. Fortunately, I am busy today. I can't be there. We find that a funny story because he's so excited about what we're doing. And I couldn't be any more proud. Just to give a little background, our youth development basketball, these are girls, 12 and 13 years of age. They competed all across the state of California against over 70 different teams in the state of California. The young ladies we're getting ready to introduce won the championship. And so, we are recognizing them through Amy Sheckleyan. Thank you, Amy, for doing so. But if I could have the young ladies come forward.
And also.
Our coaches, our youth development team, as well as our employee public relations and youth development officers that are assigned. As you see on the jersey, Harold came to me and said, you know, we want to come up with a, a good team name. We had stuff like the Rangers and the Renegades and all these different things. Come on up, ladies. Came up with six-point stars. And I took it to Harold the next day, very excited, thinking, hey, he's going to be excited about the name. Kind of looked at me and raised his lip and went, eh, yeah, okay, let me think about it. So the more we thought about it and the more it kind of sunk in, it's a perfect fit for our girls' basketball team. We have a boys' team as well. Boys didn't win the championship, but we play again this Saturday, Sunday, at McDermott for anyone who wants to participate and be there. I did have the opportunity to visit with most of the young ladies. Some were in school yesterday. And to the supervisors, they're very thankful for the, the presentations that you give. The longer it is, the better it is, the more time they're away from school. But the parent, the parents did allow them to be here today. This is an incredibly exciting time for the young ladies to win this. And so you know, for the board, we have young ladies from Springville, Porterville, Pixley, Visalia, Tulare. They're from all over the county. We're very thankful for our coaches. Our coaches, our Deputy Sheriffs with the Sheriff's Office, they know basketball. They coach the young ladies. And this is just such an exciting thing for us. So I wanted to be able to recognize our six-point star champions of their basketball league, girls ages 12 and 13.
So I have a presentation here. And how about Coach Kendra Snowden and Angie Torres? Raise your hands. Mother-daughter duo coaching this team. So this is a, a great thing. Yes. So I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas the Tulare County Sheriff's Office held an inaugural two-day summer basketball camp at Pixley Middle School in August of 2019. And whereas the goal was to build bridges with youth and communities that will last a lifetime, further building upon the trust in law enforcement. And whereas offering youth sports is a new endeavor for the Tulare County Sheriff's Office, who recently completed a successful NFL flag football league in Ivanhoe. And the TCSO Youth Basketball League included opportunities for boys and girls ages seven to 18 to participate and play against other police activity leagues' teams from throughout the state. Whereas more than 80 girls and boys dribbled up and down the basketball courts, but only one would come out on top. And whereas the Six Point Stars, an all-girls team, is coached by Deputies Kendra Snowden and Angelica Torres, a mother-daughter duo, it includes girls from communities throughout Tulare County. And whereas the Six Point Stars outshone the competition by recently taking first place in the Central Valley League Championship, where they were undefeated, 6-0. And where the Six Point Stars have a busy winter league coming up, they will be playing in multiple tournaments throughout the state and even hosting their own tournament in Woodlake in January 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize the Tulare County Sheriff's Office Youth Basketball League Champions, and we commend the Six Point Stars players and coaches upon their championship finish in the Central Valley League and wish them the best of luck in their upcoming season. This is signed by Chairman Crocker, Vice Chair Vanderpool, myself, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. And I also want to thank the parents also for all the support that you give your children in, in, in pursuing sports and being a part of the community. And one last thing is, I did play basketball in high school. So if you guys ever need a sub or anything like that, just, just let me know and I will be there. So with that, if we could have our, our coaches step forward or hobble forward. This didn't, this didn't happen playing basketball, did it?
It wasn't basketball.
Okay.
I went to my own tournament.
Oh, man. All right. Well, ladies, thank you very much for your support of our, our young ladies here in Tulare County and bringing home the championship. And we'll get a, a photo and then we'll get a group shot with, with the sheriff and everybody. You got it, Mom?
I got it.
Okay, you want to, Director Sheckleyan, let's go back.
Should we have the supervisor stand up in the back?
Sure.
Yeah. This is in my way, actually. Make everyone come close together. And the supervisor, CAO, you can stand up behind them. All right.
Stand up.
Amy, you ready?
Yes.
One, two, three. One, two, three. And again. One, two, three. Perfect.
Supervisor, if I can just touch on one real quick thing, and I didn't mention it, but Lieutenant Harold Lyles, I, I just need him to have another round of applause for what he's done. He's brought in the LA Clippers. The LA Clippers coaching staff brought in a two-day clinic to Pixley, where we had close to 100 kids being trained by the LA Clippers coaching staff.
Wow.
That's through Harold Lyles. The NFL players came and he's currently working on professional soccer players that are coming in to give clinics to our kids all through Tulare County. Harold Lyles, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to Item Three, Presentation Given by the Tulare County Sheriff's Office on a Proposal from Motorola Solutions for a Flex Software Dispatch System.
This is the first time we've had a group not leave after their presentation. They really don't want to go back to school, do they?
It's a long news.
They are great young ladies. We visited yesterday at the Sheriff's Office. They're so fantastic and they're very funny. They taught me, what was this one?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Not supposed to do that. I didn't get it right. It took me 10 times.
Anybody get a picture of that?
No, no, they got a picture. Trust me. I saw it on Facebook last night. I've been, oh my goodness. So, young ladies, thank you very much. My portion is going to be actually very short again. To our chairman, good morning, and to the board, good morning. Again, to our CAO and County Council. As the sheriff, moving forward in Tulare County, innovation and technology becomes so vitally important, specifically when it comes to public safety and how do we address those issues of public safety moving forward. The presentation that you'll see this morning is really designed around the future of emergency services, not only for operation of emergency services, public safety in the field of law enforcement, as well as when it comes to fire. And I'll turn that over to our good chief here in a moment. But I think what's important to recognize is the collaboration that our two departments have working together for the future. I'm very thankful that our chief, my good friend Charlie Norman and I, we have partnered in such a collaborative way that the expansion of what we're looking to in the future with our presentation here this morning is really going to be the spearhead leading the way for the future into the next 25 years, I believe, as to effective communication and the delivery of services and resources with public safety. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Fire Chief, Charlie Norman.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. It's hard to follow the basketball team. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Britt, members of the board, Ms. Peterson. Moving public safety under one rooftop, getting us into the Cigna Building, having one-stop shopping, very visionary. It's, there are so many collaborative efforts that go on behind the scene. It's, and it all starts with, what are we trying to do? Ultimate mission. I think getting our dispatch center evolved into that. Dispatch is very different in law enforcement than it is from fire. We need to, it's like having an In-N-Out Burger. You don't want it right behind you due to high cholesterol, but you want it right in the neighborhood.
So it's a short drive.
Same thing with dispatch. Police and fire, sheriff and fire, very, very different, very, very different subcultures. Ten code versus clear text, large-scale incident expansion. But we need to be close in proximity because we perform a lot of the same functions. And getting us into the Cigna Building is very, very appropriate. And some of the technology upgrades that we're looking at as far as one-stop shopping, having hazardous materials incident, as we talked about the other day, and then having that technology at our fingertips, being able to decipher this, being able to save lives, save minutes, and to make us a much more progressive public safety agencies throughout the county. So with that, I'll turn it over to the UnderSheriff Sigley.
Good morning, Tom Sigley, UnderSheriff, on behalf of Sheriff Drow, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Mr. CAO and Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present this. I'm going to try to go through this so you guys don't fall asleep on me. But we've been working on this project since late 2018, going through the systems. Some of the challenges that we came up with was the management and the use of our disparate system. We're at the end of life with our current systems. There's no county-wide system communication that we have right now. Currently, with the system we currently have, which is ADSI, we are their largest customer in the United States and their only customer in California. Data retrieval is difficult and staff-intensive. It's inefficient. I mean, it worked 15 years ago, but, you know, we've moved on. There's no, the big officer safety concern, there's no name and address alert. And what that means is, right now, if we have a contact with somebody at a residence with a gun, if we don't manually enter that as a flagged location, it, it's not flagged for if fire goes to something there, or if one of our deputies goes to something there. This new system automatically does it. Right now, our processes are manual, sorry, I'm vibrating, are manual and paper-driven, which is a liability. Our, our law enforcement and fire dispatch centers right now are inefficient, which is a safety concern. And this system, what we liked about this system was the various aspects of what it can do. Our goals in this project were the multi-jurisdictional data sharing. Right now, the city of Visalia has this system. The city of Porterville has this system. The city of Tulare is going to this system and we don't. And what this system does is it talks to everybody that's connected with it. So right now, Kings County uses it also. So if we implement this technology, it'll improve efficiency via system integration. So if something's happening in the city of Visalia, the city of Porterville, rather than waiting for their dispatch to call our dispatch, to call us on the radio, it's instantaneous. It's industry-leading technology. We, we've gone through a, a system evaluation on, this isn't just dispatch. This covers, we discovered a need to replace most, multiple systems within Sheriff's Office. And one of those is our, not just our computer dispatch services, but our records management, our jail management. This system includes video analytics, situational awareness, and I'll show you the video camera system also here shortly. We've identified what all our partners, agencies have within Tulare County, which is this Motorola Flex. So one vendor kind of came to the forefront that can handle everything we're looking for, and that was the Motorola solution. This kind of is a portfolio of the software solutions we're looking at, which is the Flex, which is our CAD. It also includes property inventory, evidence inventory, biometrics, jail management system, case management system, dashboards, which I think you'll all like here in a second. The Aware is the situational awareness, which is also the CAD integration, which shows us where our units are versus if we need to support the city or the city needs to support us. By these, this integration of this CAD, it shows on both dispatch systems. Currently, our radio consoles that we have in dispatch are 15 years old. They're at their end of life. The positive thing about this proposal is it replaces all of our radios for, our radio consoles for dispatch for sheriff and fire. And we're already a vendor with Motorola. All of our patrol cars, radios are Motorola, our handhelds are Motorola. Command Central is a full suite of integrated products that work together seamlessly to increase officer safety as well as community safety. Without going through item by item, there's a, a short video I'm going to show you that kind of brings this all together for you. The Flex enables agencies to seamlessly share information, like I said before, while still preserving individual agency standards and data integrity. More than 90% of Flex customers share data in multi-jurisdiction, jurisdictional environment. This is kind of a roadmap of what I'm talking about. Easily search records from neighboring agencies, make first responders safer with all relevant data. And what I mean by that is, I'll give you a prime example, because I just heard it a couple of weeks ago on the radio, where the city of Visalia was on the lookout for a suicidal subject with a gun, left in a vehicle towards the county area. By time Visalia dispatch telephoned Tulare County dispatch, who then got on the radio and notified somebody, he was already through Tulare. Whereas with this system, if they put that immediate, it pops up on ours. It pops up on Tulare's. It pops up on Porterville. So we have that info. So we have that information now. Luckily, we did find himself Tulare and everything was okay. But that's just a small instance of where, you know, that one worked out based off our old technology. Spillman Flex provides agencies with real-time dashboards, automated reports. You can search any field, and it's built around a central database and easily produces actionable intelligence. So this is what I'm talking about, our dashboard. Each one of you can set up your own dashboard on this system. And this one, if you look here in the top right corner, I don't know if you can see it, we set this one up on Supervisor Valero for District Four. You enter what stats you would like to keep track of. So if you want to keep, for your district, you want to keep track of burglaries, robberies, whatever stats you'd like to keep track of, you'll have access to this. So you can pull it up if you're at one of your meetings and, you know, without relying on somebody calling somebody to call somebody. But each one of you can create your, view your own real-time views of crime trends in your district. This will improve county-wide emergency services. Having situational awareness in all areas of Tulare County is critical to maintaining balanced coverage. Below are a few of the solutions that will greatly improve public safety throughout Tulare County. It's going to improve our response times. It's got real-time video capture that I'll show you, predictive analytics and crime mapping, CAD-to-CAD integration between public safety access points, and cross-agency collaboration. Motorola ties, there's the real-time dashboards, like I said, the automated reports. You can search any field. I think I went backwards maybe. Improve efficiency via system integration. Again, this just shows you the flow of how all these systems talk to each other, which like right now, we have, you know, one system doesn't talk to the other system. You've got to log into one system to get the information from another system. And building the bridges between those systems has been problematic. The long-term partnership we're looking at with Motorola, it's, they have a 90-year history in business. So obviously, they've done it right. They've got 2,000-plus successful implementations. And the good thing about this is as we grow, we wouldn't be charged site licenses like, like some programs you have where you add users, you've got to add licenses. This allows for growth. Over 20% of the customers have used this software for more than 15 years. This kind of gives an outlook nationwide. There are 60 customers currently in the state, in California. All our surrounding states are also heavily into Motorola. But one thing I want to mention on this is, in the next year or two, we're going to have to come into compliance with state law that, on the bills that were passed as far as AB 953, the racial profiling bill, as where, as well as transitioning from UCR federal stats to the Californian average reporting, which I researched last night. San Bernardino County, because they're larger, so San Bernardino, San Diego and those, they spent $1.67 million to get their system upgraded to report for Assembly Bill 953. Motorola Solutions investing heavily in market-leading technologies so that Tulare County can have the right tools in each of the responders' fingertips in moments that matter. Again, it's industry-leading technology, it's real-time video, it's unified look and feel, enhanced situational awareness, streamlined processes. I want to show you this quick video. It kind of summarizes everything I've been saying.
Every moment matters, every second, every click. A single decision could save a life. A single action could be the difference between managed complexity or chaos. But how do you handle increasingly complex situations with lives at risk and data streams multiplying? Welcome to Command Central. 911 calls and texts are flooding in. Command Central is tracking everything for you. Each caller's number, location, and how they contacted 911. And from the second you answer a call, critical information connects across your application suite, populating all relevant fields. So you save every possible second and can focus on managing your response. CAD has captured your caller's phone number and location, and your map automatically zooms to the area, allowing you to focus on what matters most. Reports of a major incident on a highway, multiple vehicles involved. From the moment you answer 911, Command Central is working for you. CAD has started the incident response process with the right information. You see the location on the map and all relevant information from 911 is in CAD. Everything is automatic. There's no manual integration, no duplication of effort, and reduced chance for human error. But data streams keep flowing in, and witness accounts are multiplying. You need eyes on scene. Command Central Aware adds video into your mission-critical communications, providing better visibility of the detail you need. Primed with your CAD incident data, you access nearby cameras, traffic cameras, third-party business cameras, and security cameras. These cameras enable you to become an eyewitness. Clicking on the camera closest to the accident immediately verifies traffic is backed up on the highway and smoke is in the distance. You click Save and immediately send an image or video clip to Command Central Vault, tagged with the incident number as evidence. You focus on the blue icons on the map which show you officers are on scene, deploying a video drone for greater situational awareness. New information from the drone's aerial view reveals your situation has gone from bad to worse. An overturned truck is involved. And zooming in further, you see that you have a hazardous spill to coordinate and control. Time to update your response. Incidents can escalate quickly and unpredictably. Your team needs to see every perspective across every application instantly. From dispatch to mapping to video, rich, connected insights lead to better responses and improve outcomes for both responders and citizens. In a hazmat situation, your main priorities are protecting more people from entering the hazardous zone and following protocol to inform community leaders. In just a few clicks, you can inform community leaders and citizens with an emergency notification. You can rapidly deploy text, voice message, or email to share critical information with people inside the incident radius that keeps them out of harm's way. You can also share information with agency partners through a CAD-to-CAD interface, removing unnecessary phone calls to coordinate your response. Your developing scene is creating huge amounts of information. From command and control, officers on the scene, and citizens, between photography, video, citations, field notes, and witness statements, the data is adding up very quickly. And within this data is the intelligence you need to correlate and resolve the case. Even while responders are still on an active scene, you need to build a consolidated narrative of the incident. Command Central Records seamlessly integrates everything, from any app, network, or device, into a single record in real time, all linked to the case number. Agencies are facing unprecedented levels of information from disparate sources. Technology is vital to bring it all together, to transform your post-incident analysis and free your officers from paperwork so they can spend more time within the community. Unifying communications throughout incident response serves as a lifeline for first responders, providing the essential lines of information to the right person at the right time. Command Central connects critical data to streamline the workflow, from call to case closure, eliminating distractions and enabling officers to safely and efficiently protect our communities. Save clicks, save seconds, save lives.
So Motorola Solutions exclusive benefits, it's the only company that provides radio console integration with our existing systems. County-wide and cross-county data sharing, CAD interoperability with neighboring agencies, as I explained earlier, industry-leading partnerships. It's a full suite of public safety products that work seamlessly together with the CAD, the records management system, jail management system, the video camera, the video analytics, the situational awareness. And Motorola is interested in making Tulare County their show site in the West. And just to kind of summarize, some of what we've included in this is the E911 interface that we're having to go on, online with, is included. The evidence management, evidence barcoding, jail management, our driver's license scanning software, fire ERS interface. Here's a big one that we've already kind of touched base with Stephanie Cameron over at the courts that they may be interested in helping us on this, is, this already has a bridge for E-courts, which makes our court paperwork system, which we've been trying for 15 years, to go paperless. This is, has the bridge to do that. It's already got the GTL interfaces, which we're on contract with. It's got court judicial sharing for paperless courts, and it's already custom-built, in the process of custom-building, the racial profiling requirements for AB 953. So we went, like I said, I just want to summarize, we went through the evaluation process. We identified our needs as far as software and the issues we were having. And this has been about 15 months going with the committee we had. And we, we learned that some of the other surrounding agencies and cities spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants to figure out that this was their answer. But what we also figured out is, we're already a customer of Motorola, so their systems seamlessly transitioned to the operator, or the radios we're using now. And Spillman Flex has a product called Insight that allows the agencies, like I said, to share the information but remain separate. We were, like I said, we're currently a Motorola customer. And we found that adding technology to the infrastructure that's already in place has numerous benefits. Through multiple demonstrations and site walkthrough audits, we found that data sharing through Motorola's Insight product would allow us to maintain agency autonomy while still sharing data between departments. We found that Motorola is the only vendor on the market that we can share with Visaya PD, Porterville PD, and Tulare PD, as well as Kings County. Motorola is able to accommodate several additional needs with a single vendor solution, such as the video we showed you, the analytics, personnel, tracking, training, equipment management, all within the same system. Motorola is currently our vendor for radio, as I said, and we are building upon this technology in our new communication center. It makes sense to add our existing technology by enhancing one or more expensive mission-critical solutions that we already invest in. Motorola is heavily, is investing heavily to integrate all critical public safety systems together, such as radio, 911 call-taking, CAD records, jail, and video. Having a single vendor handle this solution is a key benefit, but having these solutions work together will save time and save lives. Motorola is the only vendor that has integrated solutions across every one of these platforms that we currently have. So like I said, our, our current system is at end of life. We've had it. We're their only customer in California. We're their largest customer in the United States. We just wanted to give you guys an update on the proposal, to give you guys time if you had any questions. We've also invited executives from Motorola who are here. If you'd like to ask any questions, but I've just, if you can get up and give a brief statement, I'd like to introduce Joe Lunt for Motorola.
Thank you, undersheriff, sheriff-in-chief, for inviting me here today. Board of supervisors, a privilege to be here. I am, as has said, Joe Lunt. I am Senior Vice President and Senior Director at Motorola Solutions and the Software Enterprise, and specifically covering computer-rated dispatch records management, jail management, and analytics. My specific intent for being here today, and it's very specific, this is the only such meeting I have attended this entire year, is because of the interest that we have in partnering with Tulare County. Leadership is a very important part of taking advantage of strategic technologies. When you marry great leadership with cutting-edge technology, there's a force multiplier that takes place. And what we get from that is what we consider lighthouse customers. Customers that showcased our technology in the best possible light, and that's what we're interested in doing here with your county. An example today would be what we saw with the, the girls' basketball team that was brought forward. These are the types of leaders that we find become our, our lighthouse customers. What does that mean to you? Is that, is we, what do we have to offer and bring to the table? Is, as mentioned here today, we are a 90-year-old company. We've been in the public safety software space for 30 years. We have currently invested in the last four years, over a billion dollars, in bringing these critical technologies together. We have 2,500 employees dedicated to making this solution viable for the marketplace, 1,500 of which are dedicated solely to development and research and development, 250 are dedicated to customer service. So we look forward to a bright future, hopefully partnering with this county, with the sheriff's office, with the fire department, and with the other existing customers that, that are already here, and creating this lighthouse environment that we can all take advantage of. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Now your burning question, how much? Right?
Since you brought it up.
So the proposal with everything that we have right now is 8.3 million. This is spread out, we've negotiated, spreading it out over seven years, which puts it at about 1.35 a year, which covers annual maintenance. It covers all new radio consoles for the dispatch center in, when it goes into place at Sheriff Fire Headquarters. I'm trying to get out of the habit of calling it the Cigna Building. But the positive thing about this is that is not net county cost. So we're currently meeting and working with the CAO because right now, we pay annual maintenance on current software we're using. We're paying, you know, the maintenance and upgrade stuff that we pay for annually. We're putting all that together, plus what we get from some of the agencies that we dispatch for. So we're working with the CAO to come up with that. So that is, the 1.3 a year is not net county cost. So what we're looking forward to is the meeting in December is coming back before you, giving you the net county cost after we work with the CAO, see that this is a viable option. And like I said, it covers the hardware, software, and maintenance for the seven years of this amortization. So with that, any questions, I can try to answer.
Very good. And I, since Motorola is here and they want us to be a lighthouse, I know they'll give us a great rate. We'll start with Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I was kind of thinking that you might be, you know, sporting a shirt that had Motorola emblems on the shirt because you're now a spokesperson for them. Great presentation, undersheriff. I think I was confused as to who your employer was as you were speaking. I thought it was very interesting. And, you know, this board has always been a huge proponent of public safety. And I do see tremendous public safety benefits through this program, through the consolidation between sheriff and fire, through the integration that there could be through neighboring counties, our internal cities within the county. I think there are tremendous benefits that could come from this. But benefits do come at a cost, and so there's a lot that we have to consider. I'm curious, there's a tremendous amount of data here that would come with this system and be gathered by the system. How about storage of that data? Is that all a part of this? Has IT been involved in these conversations? You know, I want to make sure we're, we're looking at the whole picture because this may be a cost for the program, the technology, the ongoing maintenance. But what, what type of investment do we have to make to be able to provide that infrastructure to run the system?
It includes the service.
It includes the service.
It does include, okay, great. And as long as IT's been involved in these conversations, that's, that's a very important thing as well. What is the useful life of the current system that we have? I know you say we're at the end of it. How, how pressing is this, is this issue?
I, I mean, personally, we think it's critical, because we're spending so much time trying to extract information.
Okay.
Because it's kind of junk in, junk out, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Where this new technology is so much more advanced, and I think it's going to shorten our response times, it's going to increase our officer safety as far as automating a lot of the reports, putting deputies back on the road faster than sitting in the office writing paper.
Okay. I thank you for covering the, the cost aspect as well. I think that obviously you've engaged the CAO and are talking about dollars and cents and what the ultimate net county cost is, and it, you know, it seems to me that if it does come down to it, this is such a need that, you know, there should be a willingness to maybe sacrifice in other areas that we might be able to come up with some extra dollars to pay for this system, because I think there are benefits, not only for the public, but also for officer safety, as you had mentioned. So very, very, very supportive of this, and I do think that Tulare County has an opportunity to become a lighthouse for Motorola, but, you know, that's great terminology for them, but for me, the most important thing is our public safety and making sure that we do conserve those precious seconds that our public deserves at a time of need. So thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it, and hopefully you'll stay employed with Tulare County and not Motorola for many years to come, Tom. Thank you.
Supervisor Valero?
Yes, so my concern was also with IT storage, but nonetheless, if this is something you think will cause greater efficiency and effectiveness in public safety, then this is something we should consider. No longer looking at safety in silos, but as a collaboration effort across all partners. One of the things that I, I wanted to go back to was the multi-jurisdictional data sharing. I know that there are other PDs that are not listed here, such as like Woodlake, Dinuba. Is it because of the, kind of the proper, the community in which we're looking at, the region, but why are other PDs not included in this sampling?
Because we handle the dispatch services for Lindsay PD, Farmersville, Exeter, and Woodlake. I know the PD has their own system.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Very good. Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, I just had a, a question, and by the way, this great presentation looks like a really exciting upgrades, something that's probably sorely needed, I would think. Could you expand a little bit on the jail and inmate management system? I didn't quite catch how that integrates into the...
So currently, our jail management system is through ADSI. What this does is it replaces our booking software. So to give you an example of how this transition would be seamless, would be, under this new system, your arrest information, say you, you fill it out on your, in your car, and when you get to the, the jail to book them, it's already into the system, whereas now we're writing it on a triplicate form that we, you know, have to give to the deputy at the, at the jail. So this replaces all of that. So that system talks to our car system more efficiently and seamlessly. The information they enter in CAD kind of subfills everything for us while we're on a call, as well as, to give you a prime example is, if you, if, say, we stop you...
You wouldn't do that, would you?
We wouldn't do that. But you haven't been stopped in the county before, but you have in the city of Porterville. Right now, we don't know that, and we have no idea what any of your contacts are.
I can either confirm nor deny that I was stopped in Porterville.
Well, under this new system, since a city that is on the system has stopped you, all your information comes up. You know, whether you're bad guy, good guy, whatever. So all that information integrates with our jail management system. The jail management system, we're looking at the biometrics, so if you've came into the facility before, you've been booked in before, you decide you like it so much you want to come back, you, we bring you in the second time, we run your thumb, finger, whatever print we take, and it brings out your information, and then we just have to update. It's got the cash, the phone, the visitation, all that included under the GTL interface. It's, the big one, I think for us is huge, is the E-courts interface, because one of the biggest things we face now liability-wise is if we have a late release because somebody misread a court paperwork, or through this system, that goes away as far as the paperwork. It's all what we now deem paperless, which we're not, but this system actually does it. I don't know if that answers your question about the jail management.
Yeah, that was, that was good. I just, I didn't quite catch that as you were going through how exactly that worked. One other quick, this is probably a quicker question. If we are in one of these areas, say up in my district, up in the forest somewhere, and, and one of the deputies needs to enter something up there, are we reliant at, at all on, on cellular network? Is it satellite-based? Is it, are we okay up in those areas?
It is, but it, it doesn't have anything to do with this system. It's what we use for modems in our cars, or GPS as far, or what is the antenna we use? The cradle point. We have cradle points in our cars, which is what talks to internet or whatever our system. It's not the software itself.
Okay. So you're always visible, you would always be able to interact with the system?
I mean, there's, yeah, there's some spots that obviously are blind, but we get more towers, they won't be.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Shackland?
Hi, Under Sheriff. Just a few questions. I'm, I'm curious to know, you know, what the difference is going to be in what our, what we currently pay, and what this will cost us, and you'll be coming back with that. So you said it's 8.3 million over seven years, which is 1.35. That's to pay for the initial equipment?
That's, that's to pay for the radio consoles, the seven years of software and hardware, all updates.
Right.
And then the maintenance will start the...
And we don't know what that cost is yet?
The eighth year?
The, yeah, eighth, eight years and on.
$438.
$438,000 a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we'll be getting what we pay now?
Correct.
At a later date. Okay. You know, I'm all for county-wide integration. I think it's very important. I think communication between all our public safety personnel, you know, we hear a lot, I think maybe even during the 911 attacks, there were some issues with communication and integrated communication between all the first responders, so, you know, anytime that we can collaborate and work together with our, our partners in public safety in Tulare County, I would support that. Thank you.
Mr. CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, just real quick, could you talk about, I don't want to belabor, because I know it's been a while, but can you just briefly talk about the time that you're expected to save for detective work through the link analysis?
Yeah, so, and I, I must have blown through it, because it kind of gave you a slide, but currently our link analysis that we do through our current system, and what I mean by link analysis is, our detectives use it quite often, is say you've got your bad guy, and you want to know who he's connected to, and who he runs with, and who he hangs out with. That is time-consuming right now with our system. I mean, we had one that, we had one of our analysts put together that took about six hours. We, we went and watched a demo through this analytics through Motorola. They entered the name, because they're already tied to the systems we use, which is like LexisNexis, TLO, and Linux and those. In about seven seconds, it went three tiers deep. And if you want to go six tiers deep, correct me if I'm wrong, you go six tiers deep, but it's that quick and that updated. So that would save hours on end as far as our detective work.
Very good.
Does that answer your question, sir?
I'll just add on to some of the things that have already been stated. I think it's great that we're looking at collaborating more with other jurisdictions. I think this is fabulous. I'm glad that this is, you know, helping us to be more efficient, looking at that continuous improvement, how we can be better, how we can continue to serve our communities in, in better ways. I, I agree, I'd be curious to see what the, what the dollar amounts are when it comes back, and as part of that, I think it would also be good is to see what, when we were looking at possibly partnering with the city of Visalia for their emergency communication center, what the projected costs of doing that were, so we could have some, you know, some comparison as far as what the, what the cost would be.
I have one more question.
Yeah. Supervisor Shackland?
I know we're, what is the status with a move? Do we have a status update on a move to the new dispatch center? And would this go into effect with the new dispatch center? We wouldn't move it into where we currently are, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned this. So this takes about 14 to 18 months to integrate, which kind of times us out to when the new dispatch center is. And the way we amortize this thing is, is our first payment on this would be December of 2020, and then go seven years from then.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thanks.
You need to log out of this, or?
No action. Yeah, great. All right. We will move on to public comments. This is the time where any member of the public wishing to speak on any matter within the board's jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda, feel free to come forward. If you are speak, I do have multiple public comment forums on things that are on the agenda, primarily Item 6, so if you, we'll, we'll take that up in a little bit, so there's no need to comment now. There any other? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll take up our consent calendar, Items 7 through 43. Are there any items on the consent wishing to be pulled by members of the board or public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a mo...
Yeah, I just want to make one clarification on Item 15. The agenda listing says that it's effective December 17th. That's incorrect. It's effective pay period 25, which begins November 24th, and the actual, December 17th is the actual pay date. It's correct in the underlying agenda item, but I just wanted to point that out.
Very good.
I'd move for approval of consent if there's nothing further.
We've got a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Supervisor Valero. I'm not, I didn't want to pull it, but I just wanted to say a shout-out to Health and Human Services for Item 19. I think that's fantastic, as well as RMA for new buses. So please cast your votes.
Whoops. I already did.
And the item passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll go into our first public hearing, Item 5. And the public hearing for Item 5 is now open.
Chairman Crocker, Supervisors, CAO, County Council, I am Aaron Bach, Assistant Director for the Resource Management Agency, and before you today is General Plan Amendment Number GPA 19-001, Change of Zone Number PZC 19-003, and Tentative Parcel Map Number PPM 19-006. And I would just like to thank Dana Metlin and the Loftses for going through this process. I know it's been a little bit arduous, but they did go through the full process here. So the request is a change of land use from agricultural to rural residential on a 1.72 acre parcel. This includes a change of zone from AE 10 to RA 87, Tentative Parcel Map Number PPM 19-006, to divide the 7.12 acre parcel into three parcels. The applicant is Eric in Shannon Loftstead, and this is within the UAB of the City of Exeter, Road 180, south of Avenue 276. Here is a vicinity map where it shows us property clearly between the cities of Farmersville and Exeter. The, as you can see from the general neighborhood, there is quite a bit of rural residential, so it's consistent with the neighborhood, and it fits nicely within it. So the proposed general plan change would be to rural residential land use designation. You can see from the map that this is outside the specific plans for West Exeter and the City of Exeter's, UDB and specific plan in that area. It's consistent with the general plan. We did send notifications to the City of Exeter about the map and the hearings, and did not receive a response back from the city. As far as the change of zone, it's RA 87, so rural residential, 87,000 square foot minimums. And this is the tentative map with the three parcels. And that completes staff's presentation. The request is to hold a public hearing, adopt the Planning Commission's recommendations and findings for approval for the General Plan Amendment Number GPA 19-001, accept the categorical exemption, and direct the clerk of the board to publish the adopted ordinance and amended zoning map for PZC 19-003. And with that, that completes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, the applicant's here as well to, to talk on the matter.
Very good. Any questions from members of the board? The only question I had was, I didn't see the Rural Valley Lands Plan.
It was 11 score, so well within your discretion to approve.
Yep. That's, was my question. Applicants, you don't need to say anything, but if you'd like to, you're more than welcome to.
Hello, good morning, and thank you for your consideration. My name's Eric Loftstead. This is my wife, Shannon. This has been our primary residence for 10 years, and the main objective here is to separate the existing two homes, and then because of the zoning change, we're leaving a third parcel for potential development. No plan for that right now, but as far as environmental impact and traffic, that sort of thing, like I said, there's already two existing homes, so the immediate impact will be none. It's mainly just the paperwork for now. And then, of course, the future development is within, as he stated, within the, conforming to the surrounding parcels, which are all that size or smaller. So it's a change on paper, but for now, it's, it's not really doing any environmental impact.
This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this matter? Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, close the public comment period.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of this item.
We've got a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
And the public hearing is now closed. I'm going to, I know that many people are here for Item 6. I'm going to have a brief recess, because I know that it may take a little while, so we're going to do a five-minute recess right now, and so we will come back at, well, we'll say 10:30. We'll get, come back for 10:30, do a stretch break, and, and we'll take up Item 6 after that. We'll call the meeting back to order. If everyone could please take your seats. We're going to begin with Item 6, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to introduce and waive the first reading of proposal ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. Mr. Washam? And the public hearing is now open.
Today we're bringing forward short-term rental proposed ordinance.
Check, check the screen.
I got no buttons. Oh, there you go. All right, I'll, thank you. Mike Washam, Tulare County's RMA Associate Director. Today, we're here to consider a short-term rental ordinance. Just starting off, the, the California Constitution gives the power and authority and really ultimately the responsibility to the county to enact ordinances that, and regulations to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of, of the people. Reasonable regulations are necessary to provide protection from impacts from short-term rentals, while maintaining property rights of the owners to be able to conduct and do what they'd like with their property. So I just kind of put that out there as we start. Short-term rentals in Tulare County, vacation rentals have existed in Tulare County for many years, with our, our great national parks, the, the World Ag Expo, all of those things draw visitors to our county, and they have been existing for, for many, many years. These types of rentals have always been legal in Tulare County. The zoning ordinance does not restrict a property owner from the rental of an entire single-family home, regardless... from the rental of an entire single-family home, regardless of the length of tenancy. All dwellings, including houses, that are rented for a period of thirty consecutive days or less are required to pay transit occupancy tax, or otherwise known as TOT. As such, all short-term rentals, property owners are required to register with the tax collector. Now that is something that's currently in existence. That's a requirement, a different ordinance. This has nothing to do with that, with the exception that that's one of the requirements that is already out there for, for short-term rentals. We're not adding that to it, that's already required. The number of short-term rentals have proliferated in the recent years due to all the online, abundance of online rental websites. And with that rapid growth, some residents have, have been raising concerns with respect to potential negative impacts to the community, including noise, and water, traffic, trespassing, neighborhood character, public safety, septic systems, parking, fire dangers, and light pollution, to name some of the concerns that the communities have brought up. So with that, back in, on February of, of two thousand and eighteen, we came before your Board of Direction, or Board of Supervisors for direction on the matter, and we put out there five, five options, basically. Remain status quo, which is requiring, under the TOT ordinance, to register with the tax collector and collect the ten percent tax. Or choose to have a business license that would be issued through the tax collector's office. Or have a streamlined administrative approved use permit. Or do a full use permit that would go through the Planning Commission. Or even have a moratorium or a ban on short-term rentals where they wouldn't be allowed at all. And we also looked at the applicability, whether this was just in Three Rivers, or maybe throughout the foothills, foothill growth management and mountain plans, or if it's a county-wide implementation. So with that, based upon the direction we've received from the board, the intent of the short-term rental ordinance is to establish reasonable and uniform regulations for the use of residential dwellings as short-term rentals, and to ensure the health and safety of the occupants, guests, and the surrounding neighborhood. Residential dwellings units include single-family houses, condominiums, cabins, or similar facility. Residential dwellings do not include tents, teepees, recreational vehicles, travel trailers, or commercial units. Now that doesn't mean you can go pop up a tent in your backyard and all of a sudden start renting it out. This is focused on houses, single-family homes or cabins that are used for rentals. Those others, if they're allowed at all, would require a more intense use permit, and may not be allowed, may have to go through the full use permit. So we're not really addressing those types of alternatives, types of things that we're seeing out there. We're focusing on ninety percent of the issue, which is the houses and cabins that are being rented. If adopted, this would add Chapter sixteen-point-seven, Short-Term Rentals, to the county zoning ordinance, and require an administrative use permit that would be processed through the RMA. So we've had multiple community meetings in Three Rivers regarding vacation rentals and the preparation of, of this draft, short-term rental ordinance. This goes back to the fall of two thousand and seventeen, is when we started reaching out into the Three Rivers area, and then we went to the board, as I just discussed. The most recent community meeting was a town hall meeting back in July of this year. We had developed a draft ordinance that we presented up there, walked through it, obtained comments, questions, concerns. Took those, and also published it online, and received comments via emails or letters submitted. Made a number of revisions based on public comment, drafted, made those revisions to the draft ordinance, and, and then put it forward to, to the Planning Commission, which I'll talk about in a minute. Throughout this process, we've collaborated with the County Fire Department, Treasury Tax Collector, Environmental Health, and Building Department, and we continue to collaborate with them to make sure that all the revisions have been based on their specific areas of expertise. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning Commission held a workshop in this, in this chambers, and we went through the draft ordinance line by line, receiving important comments and suggestions from the public. The RMA, Fire, and Environmental Health considered the public testimony and made appropriate revisions again to the draft, so continually evolving the draft ordinance. On October sixteenth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. Staff presented the revisions made to the draft ordinance, received additional comments from the public. The, the Planning Commission held, opened the public hearing, received all that testimony, and they continued the matter. They closed the public portion and continued the matter specifically to allow two things. One was for the Fire Department to further revise its recommended regulations regarding outdoor fires. And two, for clarification regarding septic tanks and the septic systems and determining the maximum occupancy allowed for the cabins or vacation rentals. The Planning Commission continued the hearing until November sixth, at which time they received a presentation from staff with details regarding those, specifically with those two concerns. And the Planning Commission recommend, made a recommendation to your Board of Supervisors for adoption of this short-term rental ordinance. So some key points of the ordinance. This is a one-time administrative use permit required for each individual rental unit. Again, this is one time, it's not an annual fee, it's not anything like that. It's a one-time fee and a one-time process. A maximum of two short-term rental units per individual lot or parcel, if allowed. Meaning if you have three or four units on residential land, zone land, this wouldn't apply. You'd have to go through a bigger, more, more robust use permit to allow that. This is simply for single-family homes with maybe a potential additional residence on, on the site. The use permit runs with the owner and not the land, and it terminates upon the change of ownership. That is somewhat unique, but not uncommon amongst other short-term rental ordinances throughout the state. This is because we want to make sure that owners understand the responsibilities and the requirements when they're, when they are renting out their properties. They're required to register and pay TOT tax through the tax collector. And again, that's nothing new. That is a standing requirement as it is today. Occupancy standards. The maximum overnight occupancy of a short-term rental shall be limited to a specific number of occupants. That being a maximum occupants of normal, more than two persons per, per unit, plus two additional people per bedroom, with a maximum of twelve people. So no matter how large the, whether you got six or eight or twelve bedrooms, it's still twelve people maximum. Except that two minor children under age twelve would be allowed under that threshold. So potentially fourteen people, but two of them would be minor children under twelve at least. Maximum number of day, additional day guest occupants is limited to six people. The total occupancy of the short-term overnight and day use guest allowed may further be restricted by the available onsite parking, because parking is a requirement as far as this goes to. Now I've, I've added a couple slides that weren't in your presentation, just that we presented to the Planning Commission. I just wanted to provide further clarification, because it was such a, a very important, critical piece of, of the sizing of the maximum occupancy in septic tank system. Most of the community comments were directed towards that and fire. So I just wanted to add some clarification. There's been a common misconception and concern from the community, based on some of the comments that we received, is that we're allowing occupancy that exceeds septic system capacity, and that new additions, bedrooms, so, so forth, aren't accounted for, and that we're allowing the owners to self-determine the maximum occupancy. So I just want to clarify that the ordinance is not written as a self-inspection or self-determination that allows owners to, to determine the maximum occupancy. That's not been a part of this, that's never has been. We, the county RMA, will provide the maximum based on permitted bedrooms. We'll talk about that a little bit more. Septic tanks can fail at any time. It's always the responsibility of a property owner to properly maintain and, and operate their sewage disposal systems. If there are any suspected failures for sewage devices or disposal systems, you need to contact the Tulare County Environmental Health Division. Any septic tank failure, the tank location is moved to its backup location. That's a requirement that whenever there's building permits, that there's a secondary replacement site available on this, on the parcel. Bedrooms in this ordinance are considered permits, are permitted bedrooms. Therefore, if someone's done an illegal conversion, then it is not a permitted bedroom, and it's considered an illegal addition, so there's other concerns there. However, additional bedrooms that have been permitted through the building permit process have been reviewed by Environmental Health as part of the process to issue building permits. And for those, they're looking at the size, size of the septic tanks, and they're making sure that they're appropriate for the, for the size of the structure and the size of the bedrooms. Again, Environmental Health oversees our local management plan, our LAMP. This is a fairly new statewide ordinance, and it manages the onsite wastewater treatment systems. It oversees that. It's been approved by Regional Water Quality Control Board. And our Environmental Health Division has regular, regular, regularity, responsibility over and review and approval of septic systems of thirty-five-hundred gallon daily flow or less. That includes looking at system design, the capacity of the septic tanks, percolation testing, location, alternative sites, alternative systems, et cetera. The county relies on the expertise from Environmental Health and to approve properly designed and sized septic systems. Environmental Health bases its septic system sizing evaluation on the number of permitted bedrooms. The proposed ordinance relies on permitted bedrooms to determine maximum occupancy, and that they won't exceed the septic system. So this is a table taken out of our LAMP, and then the third column is applying that to this ordinance. So the LAMP requires for a minimum tank size of seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons for any structure, one-bedroom or two. It goes up for a three-bedroom, it requires a thousand, et cetera, all the way up. And then you can look to the third column, it's showing how many adults would be allowed overnight guests. So for a one-bedroom would be four adults, a two-bedroom, six, three-bedroom, eight. As you get up to five bedrooms, twelve's allowed, but then if the house is larger than that, it's still capped at twelve total. And again, as I just explained, for one-bedroom, seven-fifty, et cetera, up to three, nine-hundred. So the, the fact are, the, the initial tank capacity is oversized to accommodate additional guests in unforeseen circumstances. According to the EPA, the average wastewater flow from per, per person is estimated between fifty and seventy gallons per day for residential units built prior to nineteen ninety-four. And now, as we're going forward, it's, on those structures that are built past two thousand and seven, the estimate is about forty to sixty gallons. So therefore, when you saw it jump from seven-fifty to a thousand, that's two-hundred-and-fifty gallons, where the use, projected use is probably only around a hundred to a hundred-and-forty gallons additional. So that's what these are based on. And that's how we base our, our occupancy for the different residential rentals. So our general requirements, we went through this, the entire ordinance, again, line by line, during the Planning Commission. So therefore, I'm just going to summarize some of the general requirements over the next few slides. However, after the summary is completed, if you have specific questions about any specific piece of the ordinance, please ask. Many, if not the majority of these requirements, are already in place, either elsewhere in county ordinance or some other regulatory agency. Nevertheless, it's an attempt to be able to give the short-term rental operator actual notice of these requirements. This isn't necessarily adding a lot of additional things, it's just simply putting it forward, so they have an understanding of their rules and responsibilities as they, as they proceed forward on this. So it's in one place, and it's upfront, so everybody knows what is expected and required. Then when we get to parking, parking standards are an example of one that is a little bit different than the other areas. It's standard for any use permit to have, require onsite parking, but it's not for, say, a long-term rental or just a residential person. We don't have those requirements. But as, as the courts have backed up, and, and we've found in many other jurisdictions, that there's impacts associated with visitors that are not familiar with the local customs and norms. Specifically, when parking comes to mind, someone from a city won't necessarily understand the inherent danger of a hot catalytic converter parking on some natural dry grass along the roadside that could, could easily start a fire. So those are why there's these impacts related, that's for specific towards short-term rentals, that we're requiring to have the parking onsite and, and in a cleared fashion where the, the surface is maintained, not parking on dry grass or brush. Another example provided is someone living a little higher elevation up in Sierra Crest had a concern because people were parking out into, into their road, and that didn't allow a snow plowing operations to occur because of a short-term rental. So that's the factors and the impacts, and that's why we're having these reasonable regulations of making sure that the parking is considered an onsite. Prohibited uses include, you can't rent a, a, a place out and then host a wedding, or have a special event, or a large party, or conferences. That's, that's not allowed under this ordinance as well. That was one of the big concerns we keep hearing about. Big parties, especially lately in the news in the Bay Area, there was a party where there was a shooting happen. This is precisely what this ordinance is proposed to try to help eliminate by not allowing those types of large gatherings. They're, they're not allowed under this ordinance. Quiet hours, renters to observe quiet hours between ten PM, eight PM. It's no guests at that time. Daytime guests need to leave by, by ten PM. No outdoor fires, if allowed. And we'll talk further about fire requirements. Outdoor fires, that was another big concern of those commenting on, on the ordinance. The Fire Department has added more restrictions as a result of this community outreach and community input. There are more details in the ordinance, but basically, the fires are only allowed during the months of November, December, January, and February on approved burn days regulated through the Air Pollution Control District, and if allowed in writing by the operator. Those, and then there's a number of restrictions as far as the fire pit and safety and clearance and all of that. So it's really limiting it only to the winter months and to those days that you check before you burn and comply with the, the air district's requirements as well. Other requirements are talking about advertising. They need to have their TOT number and, in, in their advertising. Street addresses, again, in the foothill areas, Fire has, State Responsibility Area have requirements for addressing. We're just talking about those standard requirements that are already out there. Signs, we've limited signs. Sometimes people like to advertise their vacation rentals, or if they're a management company, we've limited to a smaller size, just managed by a phone number contact, not a big billboard type of thing would be allowed. No fireworks. There's restrictions on pets maintaining that they don't run free, and they, and they don't continually park. And again, this, there was comments, why do I have to do that when other people don't know? Well, it's actually a county ordinance, and we're just putting it out there. Again, it's nothing specific to them, but it's just being able to let them have actual notice. And then trash bins. There was a requirement that we were suggesting that they needed to take the trash bins and keep them out of sight of the road. We had a lot of comment from the community saying that that's, that others don't do that, and there's a challenge because of the long dirt driveways to do that. So the Planning Commission took that off. So the trash bins don't have to be taken back out of sight. They can be the same as whatever else is doing in the neighborhood. But there is a requirement that if animals get into it, they have to have animal-proof lids and, and structures in case that becomes a problem where that may happen. Again, smoke and monoxide detectors are required. Then another thing is what we have is a posting of an informational notice inside the unit, which will have the contact numbers that needed, a site plan showing where, where, where the renters are supposed to park. On-site, if there's, if smoking is allowed by the, the owner, if outdoors smoking is allowed by the owner, an area designated for that, and they need to provide fireproof ashtray apparatus to, to do that and identify where that's located. A series of informational things that need to be there for to help the, and the renters understand what's, what they're responsible for and their responsibilities. As far as quiet time, number of guests, it'll show how many people they're allowed to have on the property, et cetera. And that will also be. And that will also be, that notification will be given out to property owners within five hundred feet, they'll be sent out, so that will be given. That was another change at the planning commission, too. Normal notification is three hundred foot surrounding properties, this was increased to five hundred feet based on community input. And the big, one of the big things is that there's a one-hour onsite response by the operator-manager of the vacation rental. They need to be available twenty-four seven to be onsite within one hour. And all of that information will be given in that posting, and so the neighbors know who to call if there's an issue, the, the renters know who to call if there's an issue, and they have to be able to respond in a very timely manner. So, other key points is enforcement. The existing regulations would be enforced by the appropriate departments, as we mentioned, animal control, if there's a issue with animals, or, or if there's a issue with septic systems, the environmental health would be called, et cetera, et cetera. This will also allow enforcement by code compliance to make sure that they uphold the compliance with the conditions of, of approval for these administrative use permits. Next would be violations. Failure to comply with the conditions would be considered a violation and subject to fines and penalties. Basically, a violations are found in government code, and they range from approximately a hundred dollars for a first violation, two hundred dollars for the second violation, and five hundred dollars for each additional violation within one year of the first violation. So it's a progression of, of, of fees that they'll have to pay if they're, if they're not, if they're found out of compliance. And ultimately, that could lead to suspension of a permit, which would come back to the planning commission, and ultimately, potentially revocation of a short-term rental special use permit through the planning commission again. This, this is amortized, but we're looking at is short-term rentals that are currently operating and paying their T O T are considered, would be considered illegal, non-conforming, and would have until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one to come into compliance. So it's got, we've got a long period of time to process the number of applications that we would receive, and, and it's no immediate burden on anybody, there's two years of planning almost ahead of that. Of course, we would hope that people would come in sooner, not all wait till December to file everybody, but. Then, for cost recovery, to process the short-term rental permits, staff is recommending a five hundred dollar, one-time, again, one-time application fee. This is based upon five, estimated five hours to process, research, and issue the permits at the board adopted, planning department, one hundred dollar hourly rate. So that's what's an estimated to, to be able to research. We relying on, we will be relying on building permits, we will be relying on environmental health's records, we will be relying on potentially assessor's records to see if, if these are older houses, if, if they're newer houses, we should have the records fairly easily to, to obtain. If they're older houses, we will have to do some in-depth research to determine when the assessor, how many bedrooms the assessor, and when they've been assessing the property, at what point in time to determine how many bedrooms are permitted bedrooms. So with that, I would be open for any questions, and then after that, to open the public testimony.
Very good. Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very thorough presentation, Mike. I did have a few comments. I know that the board gave general direction, and then the planning commission and then RMA have been very involved in this as it's progressed, and so this is really the first deep dive that I've had in this arena. There's not too many short-term rentals in District Two, so. Few, few thoughts, in general, it seems to be fairly restrictive and very specific. I have some questions regarding prohibited uses, if you would go back to that slide. On, on that list, really regulating and limiting possible uses that a renter may have on a facility seems to be a bit burdensome. I, I know that we have to ensure public safety and general neighborhood stability, but, you know, if I wanted to, to rent a house and have a birthday party there, it sure doesn't seem like that would be allowed under here because it would be considered a party. So I want to go up to Three Rivers, rent a home for my, you know, I think my next milestone birthday is my fortieth, Amy, yours is like seventieth or something for you?
Eighty.
Oh, eighty, okay. But, but, but anyways, so I, I just thought that was a little bit restrictive, and I, you know, would, would like to leave a little bit more open-endedness to that. In, in terms of policing this, obviously, we have the ability to count the number of bedrooms and occupants, I mean, is, are you going to be there checking every person that checks into a, a short-term rental to make sure they only have two people per bedroom and?
No, we're not.
Count the number of kids, so I, you know, some of that just seems, you know, a little bit restrictive. The smoking, hey, you're not standing in that ten-foot circle right there, you know, is there going to be like a neighborhood policeman? I, I just, I kind of question a little bit of that. Onsite response time, being able to be there within one hour, I, I know that you can have a management company, I'm assuming, that could be there for you, but, you know, if someone from San Luis Obispo County owns a home in Three Rivers, they've got to be there in an hour, they better own a helicopter, I guess, because, you know, being, that, that response time's going to be a little bit more difficult. And then, last point that I'll just make regarding a question, is the five hundred dollar fee, I think I would rather see us estimate lower, see how it goes, and then increase after some experience. I know it's a one-time permit and application, but general thought that I have, I do agree with the quiet hours, I like having a quiet time, that will help maintain neighborhood integrity. The dark sky protections, I think that's a good thing as well. And then the parking requirements, just being mindful of the local topography and the importance for not starting fires and neighborhood appearance as well, too, I think that's, that's a positive thing. So, did we, another question I had, do, do we look at what other jurisdictions have done in their short-term rental policies?
Absolutely. We'll talk about some of the ones you're talking about. As far as response time, an hour response time is just pretty much the norm for all of the short-term rental ordinances. That's one of the concerns of the community is that they're outside the area property owners that don't care about the community, and they don't, they, they don't know what's going on on their sites. That's why a number of them are maintained by property management companies. There's quite a few, and I'm sure there's property managers that will be here to speak today?
Okay.
That might manage twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four of these properties as, as their line of business.
Okay.
And as far as the restrictive use, that's one of the concerns, is, again, having large parties, and that's what the, one of the big complaints is, that they, there's these large parties going on in these facilities. There are other alternative methods to plan for that because we do have use permits available, temporary one-time use, or up to four times a year type of a use. So if they're planning a special rent, then we would have to go through some additional work. But if, if you're hosting a birthday party, of, in this case, the maximum would be around eighteen or twenty people, if it's more than that, yeah, there would be, it wouldn't be in compliance with this. And no, we're not going to be out there checking people's cigarettes. We're just making responsible, reasonable conditions that we hope people apply with because we cannot be out there, and we're not going to go out, and some people wanted us to go out and, and, and pump every septic tank, and measure every septic tank to confirm that this is the right size, and we're not going to go out there. We don't talk about costs and onerous conditions, we don't have the ability to do that. Right now, it's completely unregulated. What this is trying to do is pretty reasonable, uniform rules that would benefit the overall community.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Valero?
All right. Well, thank you, and I also echo some of Supervisor Vanderpoel's comments that he just made. So I've been thinking about this a lot, and I've kind of written some stuff down in really thinking about how we move this forward. And so interestingly, the short-term home-sharing model has transformed the way we think about the hospitality industry. The two questions I go to when thinking about moving this forward include whether to regulate it more strictly to preserve local culture and address, address safety concerns, and along with, but much lesser, would be the keeping local residents from being priced out, or allow it to thrive and reap the benefits of a booming tourism locale, i.e. Three Rivers, Wood Lake, Springville, Lemon Cove, and so forth. And I will say that I've used Airbnb quite often in the past, especially during my college years on the East Coast. Sadly, I, too, was a bit overwhelmed by the number of restrictions set forth in this ordinance, although you say that it's standard, so much so that as an Airbnb host, I would probably call it quits on this social enterprise. I also fear that such restrictions will cause our out-of-town guests to choose another nearby county for stay, while those who provide here close up shop. What I do see as positives for this industry and our region is this. One, short-term vacation rentals bring a positive economic impact to the county. Two, for some Airbnb and other short-term vacation rental, rental platforms are a way to boost the local tourism sector. Regulations are already set forth by hosts of Airbnb platforms. That is, hosts can use and set rules prohibiting parties and specifying parking rules. For example, I actually used an Airbnb three weeks ago, when as I got there, my friends were already there, said, hey, do not park on the street because we can be towed, so make sure you park in the parking garage. Hosts who get louder unruly, guests can turn to rental platforms for recourse and can also provide a review about that particular guest and rate them poorly after their stay. So these are just a few of many that can be done to secure those individuals that are renting from these Airbnbs. Still, with the immense growth of short-term vacation rentals in every community, ignoring the impact, whether positive or negative, is not an option anymore. These types of rentals are often marketed at two to three times the annual rental rates, and it may drive out certain individuals. For example, I did talk with someone who goes out to the Sequoias to intern seasonally, and so my fear or my concern is, although not suppressing, is what happens to those individuals that need to find a little bit more of an extended stay rather than short-term. And so, for me at least, it's a concern about what we look at as our housing challenges and availability, especially if this becomes the trend. Still, I want to share that in other communities across, across this country, the short-term rental laws are somewhat more cumbersome. Although we can't necessarily compare a Three Rivers to a Seattle or to Los Angeles Airbnb, I will share that the hardships other communities face that may present a more restrictive imperative elsewhere. But nonetheless, I still think we do have some of those imperative restrictions here nonetheless. In Glendale, vacation rentals where the host isn't present during a guest day would be banned, according to an ordinance proposed during a planning commission meeting in July of this year. San Diego, enforcement of property twenty-four seven, with proposal including a three-strike component, mean that upon three violations within a calendar year, a short-term rental permit of the offending host would be revoked for at least one year. In the community of Seattle, which obviously does not compare, but short-term rental platforms must obtain license, hosts must register as a business and as a short-term rental, up to two units only, and if operating two units, one must be primary residence, with additional costs of retail sales tax, lodging tax, business and occupation tax, and fines of up to one thousand per violation. I know this ordinance recommendation was brought before my time, and I'm aware that we are, we have gone through a series of three revisions recently, and that is why I'm still at a very, it's been very difficult for me to, to see how we move this forward. Personally, I put great charge on our planning commissioners to provide us with recommendations that provide the greatest equity for the greatest good, along with the hope that it has been vetted thoroughly prior to reaching our dais. I am also aware that our fire chief said that in a perfect world, there would be more restrictions added, but has agreed to the terms laid out in this document. And with that, I, I welcome the, the conversations that we will have before us as we make the decision moving forward. Thank you.
Very good. Supervisor Sheklin. Just ask if you could keep your applause. Thank you. Supervisor Sheklin?
I'll wait until after the public hearing now.
Supervisor Townsend, did you want to speak?
Yeah, just, Mike, thank you for the presentation, just a quick, or actually, two questions. One, as the codes are, we're, we're going to grandfather the, propose to grandfather the existing residences in, as the codes change every three years, would the owner of the, of the short-term rental be required to update their residence per code, or would it just stay under the code that they originally pulled the permit under?
It would be, it would be under, unless there's something that's, that's mandated across the board, it's not, it wouldn't be changing any, anything. It's as built, when built, under the codes at that time.
Okay, so like, like typical businesses, are it the same thing? Okay.
And just to clarify, it's not grandfathering, it's giving a period of two-year transition to, to get the permit.
Right, no, good clarification. And then Supervisor Vanderpoel asked, but I don't think there was an, time for an answer, but the extra enforcement, do we need to add people to, specifically to, on this enforcement, or do we have within our code enforcement division enough staff to cover?
We're, we're going to plan to just utilize our existing staff to do this, where we, if you dig down in it, it talks about that the operator, the phone number that's given for the local operator to be able to respond, needs to track issues or complaints, and we'll, and, and maintain those records. So, we're not going to be out there, again, we're not inspecting the property, we're not inspecting the, we're looking through the official permits and the records to determine if there's an issue that comes up where someone's saying, I've got four bedrooms, and we can only see that it's a two-bedroom, then we'll have to do further investigation. But for the most part, I think the majority of them wouldn't involve direct inspections.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. I have one question now, and then we'll take public comment regarding this, and you kind of mentioned it earlier a little bit briefly, but can you expand on why there's a difference between short-term rentals versus long-term rentals, why we're looking at it from a different standpoint?
Well, there's an impact, a different impact for short-term rental occupants than a, say, long-term resident or, or person of the community, being that they're on vacation, they're not familiar with the territory, or the environment, or the local customs, and potential hazards as far as fire safety, if you're coming from the coast in a city, in Ventura, well, Ventura's a bad example if you're in the hills, but, I mean, if you're in an urban setting, you might not be familiar with the, the, the safety issues associated with a mountain area, so to speak. And again, people are on vacation, so they tend to have louder parties, they're, they're having, they, they're not having to get up in the morning for work, so those quiet times are a little bit, they're on vacation, they're ready to let loose and, and have a good time. So there are impacts regarding that. And again, the vast majority, I know everybody's saying that this is very restrictive, and that, it's true, that there's restrictions on there, vast majority of these have, are just good neighbor-type policies, things that are elsewhere in our ordinance, and we're just putting it up front, so it's nothing that we're coming up with new necessarily, with the exception of fire restrictions are more than, than non-short-term rentals, as well as the parking restrictions about requiring onsite parking as opposed to that. Those are really the, the key points that are different, other than the maximum occupancy, and the reason we do that is for the safety and the concern of, of overtaxing septic systems. I know that there's arguments that short-term rentals, even if they have a huge group one day, overall, it's less than someone living there the whole year round. However, the septic systems are not necessarily designed that way because you can get maximum flow at one point, and that can cause an issue right away, not how much it's used throughout the whole year. So there are capacities on, on different levels there. That's why we want to rely on the expertise of our environmental health department and the fire department when they made those regulations for fire, and, and those things to, to provide the best safety for, for the community.
Very good. Seeing no more comments or questions from the board at this time, this is a public hearing, I have several public comment forms that have been filled out, and so I'll go through those. I just ask that people try not to be repetitive, I know there's numerous people that are interested, and that you limit your speaking to three minutes, and we'll go ahead and begin the public comment period. If you haven't filled out a public comment card- If you haven't filled out a public comment card, there's some at the front that you're more than welcome to, to fill out and hand to the clerk, and we'll start. Well, Bob, I think it looks like you're ready, so we'll go ahead and start with you. Both microphones are available, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Hart, and I live at 31359 Dalham Drive, and I appreciate all of you folks listening intently, and I really appreciate Eddie's comments, they were pretty much right on point. I did want to bring up the fact that, the last speaker here for the government, I can't remember his name, he said that the Constitution gave the ability to form local government. But I want to bring up that the Constitution, in nowhere in the Constitution, allows government to infringe upon the rights of people, nowhere. So that was a bait-and-switch argument, and in fact, I would love to have a one-on-one conversation with this man, because everything he said, I could rebut effectively and prove that what he said was just basically a bait-and-switch argument. So what I would like to ask the board would be this: please, look at whatever evidence you might have that would give the board the right to force obligations upon private people, because it doesn't exist any more than I can force an obligation on you. If I can't force an obligation on you, it's a maxim of law that I can't give authority to anyone else, any authority I don't have. So where did anybody else get the authority to force an obligation on somebody? And that's basically my basic premise here. Everything that he was talking about, there's already things in place to prevent fires, septic tank overflows, all that, even though Airbnb guests actually use less resources than somebody living there full-time. They don't have dogs, they don't create meth labs, they don't have really irritating neighbors for long periods of time, but that's what I would like you to do, is to table this until you can find some type of authority that gives you the right to force obligations upon people with impunity. This is people's private business. Everything in commerce, such as, if you're a corporation, you consent, if you get a license, you consent, if you buy a commercial property, you consent, that's all commerce. That's what you guys have authority in, that's what you've been talking about on every single issue that you've talked about today, is something that has to do with government, commerce, and that's what I would like you to keep in mind, is that you can't do this draconian rules that would force private people to do anything.
Thank you.
If, does anybody here know of any authority that would give you guys the right to force obligations upon people? I don't, I don't hear any, I don't hear anything.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, your three minutes.
Okay, well, I guess I've extended my three minutes, which is quite a bit shorter than this guy here. He, he got a long time. But anyway, I'll give the microphone to the rest of my colleagues, and I hope that you make the right decision here, because it's going to be an ongoing thing, and we're not getting paid to be here, you guys aren't, and we've spent lots of hours.
Thank you. Next, I have on the list is Lily Hart.
I asked to go, because I have, I have another appointment.
Sure, have you, did you?
Robert and Sarah Jackson.
Sure. Robert, want to go ahead?
Yeah, good morning, it's still morning. So thank you for serving, we appreciate your service up here in the county. Robert Jackson, live in Tulare County, down near Kingsburg. What else did you need to know?
That, that's fine.
Okay. First of all, I just want to tell you, it's been a great experience. We've been doing Airbnb on our farm for probably five or six years. I offer tours, most everyone wants an organic farm tour, and it's usually city people that come, a lot of foreigners like to stay in a farm location, but the city folks, it's great, because they're completely different cultures, and on the farm tour, it's like a city-country relations. They find out things about farming that, because we're commercial, organic farmers. So it's been a real delight. I also, I'm able to do a little PR for our values, one of them being water, and how precious water is, but it's interesting, I always ask my guests how much water does it take you to live every day, and they'll usually come up with, oh, 30 gallons, 100 gallons maybe at the top, and I'll say, well, it's usually 800, the, the figures are from 800 to 1,800 gallons per day, per person, to survive on this earth, and they're all shocked, and then I explain how that's calculated, because how much water it takes to eat. But the point is, I always will tell them, but you're worth it. And our water storage, and our water plan, and our water policy in California, you're worth 1,800 gallons a day, because you are a human and you're worth it. And they, they all are like surprised, and wow, amazing. But the point is, we're able to relate with our city folks, travelers, so it's a good thing. Now, to the point today, I don't think that as existing, you know, we have, we, we, we built part of our, we live where we do this, we built and went through all the permit, we had the environmental health reviewed, I actually, because I had more, I, I had, for various reasons, we've had the state water quality control board permit for years, so I'm paying monthly fees to have the water sampled, I'm paying annual fees to have nitrate sampled, I'm paying, of course, the occupancy tax, the transient occupancy tax every quarter, we've been doing this for years, and now you want to charge me an additional $500 to get a different permit? Don't you have an exception? We've been, you can't believe how many things I have to pay. As a farmer, how many regulations I have to be under, how many people I have to report to every day, but now you're going to require another permit for existing people? Have you guys, I, I had to put in water, firefighting sprinklers in my unit that I built, I've gone through everything, I have a fire, I have the fire, water source for fire engines, we have the fire inspector come out annually, I mean, how much more do you want, do you want to just now tack on another $500 permit? I don't understand that. I think you guys need to completely waive that, for those of us who have been following all the rules, turning in all the taxes. Now, I appreciate, we had a little discrepancy about two years ago, we forgot one of our tax returns, and we got a huge fine, and thankfully, for the county, they listened to our appeal, and they totally waived it. So, hey, I appreciate, we're working with our neighbors, but this is a great program, we want to encourage people coming to our county, they'll stay at our place, we're right on the river, they have a dedicated lawn, it's, they have tennis courts, they can use our swimming pool, but we are there, and sometimes also, it's too restrictive, sometimes we'll, we'll, we'll reserve somebody, let them come in, and then it's like, oh, I want to go see my kids down in LA. So, now I have to have a, now, you know, I can call my sister, my dad, or whatever, hey, can you go down and check the house, someone's having a problem, but anyway, I think that's too restrictive, too, so.
Thank you, that, your three minutes is long up. Sarah, did you want to?
I just wanted to say, I'm Sarah Jackson, live in Kingsburg, I want to say, I think we bring a lot of value to Tulare County, and it's really fun to be educating children and adults, and so I think it's a valuable situation to look at, to be careful, because I was one of those people that I'm about ready to say, I'm not going to do this anymore. I do all the cleaning, we do all the yard work, we do all the, you know, all the paperwork, and so it's getting, it's getting heavy, and so this would be another one of those heavy things, and so that's all I want to say.
Do you have an exemption for ag-zoned?
Yeah, that would be another question, would be an exemption for ag-zoned property, especially those of us that are doing education, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if I may. Mr. Jackson, Mrs. Jackson, other than the $500, it sounds like everything else within this is okay with you, within?
Some of those other things that were mentioned, I think, by Eddie, or, but, you know, parties? I just had, I just had my daughter's wedding at our place, we don't want to have weddings on our place from guests, but, because we only have two rooms, but the point is, parties, for us, it doesn't really matter, quiet hours, I mean, if, if, if our guests are too loud, we'll go out and tell them to be quiet, but we don't have neighbors within a quarter mile. So anyway, those, there's some things that just need to be common sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Hart?
You gotta go, yes. Do you have to call? Well, we, we tag, tag them, ma'am. Okay, sorry.
Did you fill out a form, ma'am?
Yes, we did, Norrie Naylor, 38918, Road 64, Didauba, California, and it just, it just follows, because we're a farm stay as well. And so many of the comments they made, we want to reiterate. We've been with Airbnb since 2012, we've been paying the taxes, we, the same, same story. We have educational purposes on our farm, our mission is to invite people to come and learn about agriculture. Tulare County has, is the first or second-greatest agricultural county, and we have been told by, by the, by people in the county that agritourism, they want to encourage, and so we want to, we want to second the idea that, that agriculturally zoned or rural residential be removed or excluded somehow from this ordinance, because if you look at a map, I researched, if you look at the map, there are very few in those areas, very few of these, on, on the Airbnb site, which is one of the most popular in the, you know, sites that you can look at. So, I only found about, out about this ordinance last week, and so I would have definitely come earlier to give input, but since I'm not in the Three Rivers area, we would ask that you would please consider, and it was even proposed that you could apply it to only specific areas of Tulare County, such as the Three Rivers Urban Development, within the Foothill Growth Management Plan, Mountain Plan Boundaries, that was one of the alternatives to having it countywide. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Naylor, did you want to speak, since you're together? Lily, you're, I mean, you're, everyone's taking your spot.
Well, I'm just the way it is. I'm Mike Naylor, about to be here, I think, rather be on the farm, but, yeah, it's ag, you know, we're, it's different. And I understand the regulations, and I think they should, we should have regulations on what we're doing. And when we went through the process, we went through the process of regulations to have the water quality as standard for hotels, which means ag people have to test their water, we test our water as well. And just be careful on how you run your regulations, and who you're gonna, who you're gonna hurt, because there'll be unintended consequences. So go through this process, maybe a little bit slower, that's my suggestion, and I'll leave you with some extra time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Lily, I think we're, I think we're ready for you. Morning.
I have found a slide that may really be helpful to everybody, and I'm always encouraged that Tulare County is one of the last sane counties in the state, and I do appreciate the big view from Mr. Hart as far as liberty and property rights issues. I have found an article at the University of Missouri Law School, and it is written by a guy named Kenyon Briggs.
Lily, could you speak into the mic?
Sure. It's called "The Business Entrepreneurship and Law Review," and the title of it is "The New Blame Game: How Airbnb," and you can substitute any other vacation rental sites, "has been misregulated as a scapegoat for century-old problems." And this may answer a few of the issues we're facing here. Airbnb allows anyone with a spare's couch to make extra money by renting it out to others. Since 2008, more than 3 million listings worldwide have been booked through Airbnb. Many view Airbnb as a cheaper alternative to staying in a hotel, and thus, the incumbent hotel industry views Airbnb as a threat. Because the American hotel industry views them as a threat, in their $1.1 trillion economy, hotel lobbyists convince lawmakers to create regulations that are anti-Airbnb. Cities who have passed anti-Airbnb laws, like New York and San Francisco, explain the regulations to help fix their affordable housing shortages. However, New York City has struggled to offer affordable housing for the last 100 years, and San Francisco for about the last 30 years. Thus, Airbnb's status as a scapegoat for these problems it did not create has led policymakers to misregulate and over-regulate it. Misregulation occurs when regulation does not fix the problem it was enacted to solve. This article first looks at what sort of issues regulation is capable of fixing, which something California needs to do in general. After that, a regulatory framework is provided that urges policymakers to only enact regulation that provides the greatest net benefit for all involved. In the case of Airbnb, two-way reputational mechanisms, in other words, the ability to rate the other party, usually through a public five-star rating system, has solved most of the problems regulation is capable of curing. Then the article analyzes the current anti-Airbnb laws in cities such as New York, San Francisco, even here, and argues they are not providing a greater net benefit for anyone but the incumbent hotel industry. In conclusion, policymakers should not pass any new anti-Airbnb regulation until it can create a greater net benefit than what exists now. So look up that article, I'm going to send it to all of you, if you don't mind. Of course, the issues we're facing here are affordable housing, which really has nothing to do with Airbnb. This has been going on since the Park Service decided to not have park housing for its employees. Private property rights, the big picture, our Constitution, liberty, environmental issues, which are really already addressed with the septic tank issues and all that, improvement of our economy, which is the main one. So in conclusion, the proposed regulations, ordinances, and licensing proposals by the Resource Management Agency has many flaws, that it cannot realistically enforce and fairly. The enforcement and penalties are too draconian and restrictive, I mean, nobody can have a Kinston area, a wedding, a birthday party in one of these homes, again, or risk losing their permit, doesn't sound too good. It looks as if the county has been deficient already in some of these issues, mainly in the Three Rivers area. One deputy to answer any nuisance calls, we've already got those things going on. My solution is to not cause the county more problems and expense by passing these ordinances, because there's going to be lawsuits, folks, there, there is, but to support the short-term rental hosts by giving Three Rivers and other communities, such as Badger, Springville, more deputies, more public facilities, such as public restrooms, county parks by the river, and my personal request, a white line on the outside edge of Dry Creek Road leading to Badger, which is one of the most scary mountain roads besides Manuel King. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have is Alfred Fars, I apologize if I mispronounced the last name.
I'm Alfred Fars in Springville, I'll be the shortest one here. Be, be better on the little guy. I have two little places in the, in the, in the woods, and my people come from everywhere, from Scandinavia to Russia to, and they love us. They love these little guys. That's me.
Thank you. Next we have Reb Furman.
Thank you, everybody. I'll be really brief. I've already sent you letters, emails, uh, sent the Missouri Law thing to you, the link to it, so you can look it up. But, um, my one concern is, we've heard about all the complaints, but there's, I've written the sheriff, I've written to all the supervisors, and as far as official complaints, sheriff's report, uh, anything, we've never received that. So we're doing something with no reason to do it. Airbnb is very self-regulating. The, uh, the five-star rating system works very well. We have to keep the place pristine to get a good rating, and the people that stay with us certainly can't be partying late at night or setting fires or anything, because they would get a bad rating from us, would not be able to continue to rent at Airbnb. So I just urge a vote to no on this. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Uh, next is Eric Sis, and I, that is the last of my public comment forum, so if there's anyone else wishing to comment, I ask that you come to the front and fill out a form.
Okay, um, I'll blast through this as quickly as I can. I want to talk to those fellow county residents who want laws created that have pushed local government and staff to move forward. Beware of what you wish for. I've been a landlord for 15 years, and you believe that a short-term renter, uh, is the problem. So here's a hypothetical scenario for you to contemplate. I'm a homeowner, homeowner, homeowner who is frustrated by this new law, and I quit short-term rentals and I get full-time renters. But now my neighbors will have a new neighbor whose son hangs out in the backyard with his friends and plays hip-hop till 3:00 a.m. every other night, and they park and block my neighbor's driveway all the time. They even leave their garbage can full, and the bears and raccoons tear it apart regularly. What can I do? Mom works at night, dad is never there, and of course, the dog barks constantly. So I complain to the police, but they don't, anything, they can't do anything to stop them. So what am I, as the owner, going to do? Well, I guess I'll have to evict, but that can take months and thousands in legal fees, and then, of course, they stop paying the rent for six months and trash my home. Well, then I go to court, and they tell the judge they will behave, of course, they never do, and my neighbors are stuck. Those neighbors will love you as the complainers next door. Then the sheriff finally comes to evict, but never forget, neighbor, that noisy boy and his friends know where you live. Really, is this the choice you want to make? So here are some of the questions I have. Uh, where did the directive come from the legislate, uh, for this legislation to be created? Where were the overwhelming complaints from citizens of the county? If so, how many, and where were the complaints filed formally? Did the, these complaints create a critical law enforcement crisis requiring immediate action by the county? Did county law enforcement officials file a formal request to create and enforce new laws to address short-term rentals? How many taxpayers' money, how much, uh, of the taxpayers' money has the county spent already in staff time, meetings, legal fees, and paperwork, just to get this point in creating this legislation? And what is their budget for the future? What will be the estimated cost of enforcement of this new law in terms of county, staff, law enforcement, legal work, and inspectors? Will the creation of these laws violate the vested rights of residential private property owners in the county? We are not hotels. Are they, are these laws currently in place, are there laws currently in place to address the problems and complaints associated with this type of private property ownership, such as sanitation, water consumption, fire safety, and noise pollution? As a private property owner, this kind of legislation reminds me of why I despise capital gain laws. I take all the risk, I do all the work, I pay for all the maintenance, I clean the toilets, I clean the sheets, I pay the property taxes and insurance, and when all is said and done, the government sticks their hands into my wallet and takes a piece of the action, because they have written laws to say that they have a right to it, when they don't. My answer to this legislation is, if you want to share in my success, then get down on your hands and knees with me and come over to my private property and scrub a few toilets, and if you can't find the time, then stay out of my house, stay off of my property, stay out of my septic system, stay out of my well, and stay out of my bank account. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments regarding this matter? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kristi Malik, and, um, and I live at 2315 South Church Street in Visalia, and, um, um, good morning, and thank you for all that you do. Um, it's, I think I've been at almost, I think, not the last meeting, but the last few, and, um, have come up and spoken. Um, and I, and I have emailed and heard back from, um, many of you, so thank you. I was really, I was thinking of not speaking today, um, and I was really bothered by a comment, by the, the response. I think that, Mr. Crocker, I think that you asked what the difference was between the short-term rental and the long-term rental was. And the response given to you was that people go on vacation, and because they're on vacation, they let loose and party it up. And that is just simply not true. Do, you know, I, I, I doubt that most of you go do that. We just got back from doing, um, a family vacation where we re-rented three, um, Airbnbs, um, over a course of eight days. We never go into a place and say, "Oh, we're on vacation, we're going to party it up and let it loose." On the contrary, we, we are saying, "Let's be quiet, let's be respectful to the neighbors here." If that were a problem, I would have quit. We would have quit a long time ago. We don't want that kind of problem as a vacation rental owner. And we, we don't want to be those kinds of neighbors to our, to our neighbors. Um, that would have run us out. It's just simply not a problem. Um, and the five, the, the rating system with platforms like Airbnb prevents that. People don't go on vacation and want to act be, and behave poorly, um, throwing caution to the wind and let loose and party it up, and get themselves raided right off the platform. These are travelers that love to travel, and they, they behave and act in a way so that they can keep traveling. I look at all of the previous reviews of people that I rent to. That's how we bet. And they know that that's how they build their ability to keep traveling. And like I said in the past times that I've spoken, I walk into our place, and I can hardly tell anybody's been there. They, they really seek to do such a good job, for the most part. I mean, the worst was, um, I think, what did I say? I knew it used to be cilantro was left on the floor. Um, oh, that's right, facial cleanser was used on one of the towels, and it, and it damaged it. That's the extent, and that's the extent for most of us. So please, don't believe, if you're hearing that there's people letting loose and partying it up, it's a false representation, and I really hope you do consider that. And if you need to take time, and, um, and I think you do, before passing this, I really encourage you all to reach out to, um, those of us who are doing the vacation rental owners and just educate yourself. And we, we just are trusting you to do that and be informed. And thank you so much for...
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period of this, and we will bring it back to the board for further discussion and possible action. I'll just, I'll go ahead and, and start with some things. I appreciate, um, everyone coming here today and providing, uh, comments and, and feedback, and I know many have reached out as well, uh, via email, in-person visits, letters, uh, phone calls. I, for context, and I, I know there's not, no one testified today as far as, um, from the, uh, anti-vacation rental, but, um, when we initially came back, it was quite the polar opposite. So I, I appreciate that there is actually this, um, this other perspective, because, um, you know, many times, I think it's, it's more often that the squeaky wheel, in the case of, uh, a few neighbors, um, gets more of the attention. And, um, in this case, um, the, um, you know, the folks that are, that are, you know, impacted more often than not, have, uh, been very vocal in, as far as expressing their side of the view. So I, I really appreciate that. But I, but I also want to just note that there have been, um, and I, uh, to one of the speakers' points, I don't know that any of them were necessarily formal complaints that were registered, but there were, um, quite a bit of, of letters and emails that were received two, almost, eh, two years ago or so, um, to this board, a year and a half ago, um, while we were, uh, discussing, um, this previously. I know that, um, there were comments regarding the, um, it's regarding the fee. I would be, uh, supportive of having, you know, using a, a more conservative approach to any type of fee if this was to move forward. I think that, you know, having, uh, being, uh, going on the side of, of precaution and thinking that $500 or five hours of staff time, um, knowing that there's probably many homes that, um, it won't require that amount, so I'd like, uh, you know, if, again, if it moves forward, that that would be a lesser fee associated with that. I also think that, um, uh, as a, as, that, you know, recognizing that we do appreciate, uh, businesses, we do appreciate vacation rental owners, that they're, they do provide a valuable service. We love our agriculture and highlighting that, and I think that's a, that's an excellent point of bringing people into the area, letting them know and educate them on what, uh, some of us do on a regular basis, as well as showing us our great giant sequoias and, and the mountains. Um, those are things that, that are, um, that we take great pride in, and being able to share that with others from outside of our area is something, um, that's, that's really, um, that I think is really important to, making sure that there's a better understanding of what we deal with day in and day out. I think that was, um, the fees, oh, and then the, the 500 feet for noticing. I recognize that some people during the planning commission process wanted it further, as was stated, but I think that that should be standardized. So if we notice for 300 feet for most other projects, then that should be, um, something similar. It shouldn't be, um, anything more than any other type. Uh, and those are some of my comments from what I've heard. Supervisor Sheckland?
Well, you kind of spoke of the $500 fee. I was just curious what, what exactly that included? Is that an actual, physically going to the property and, and inspecting it for all the guidelines?
That's the estimated time to process. We have to do a lot of research, more than, um, more than necessarily onsite. There will be onsite inspections as required, as necessary to prove up or not prove something when there's discrepancies on how many bedrooms, but we're going to be mostly researching the property through, uh, records, assessor's records, other records, environmental health records, et cetera, to, to do that. So it's research time, processing time, and those types of things. You know, what, uh, it, that's fine.
No, that's fine, Mike. So yeah, I, I did think that was, that was a little excessive, especially as Mr. Jackson spoke about, you know, they've been doing it for a while, uh, they haven't had any problems, and, and maybe we do look at folks who have, uh, already been doing this, doing some type of a, a grandfathering in, but again, I think the 500 is a bit excessive. Um, in regards to parties, you know, as Supervisor Vanderpool said, and, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, what is a party? A birthday party? You know, we have Thanksgiving coming up next week, maybe a family would like to, to rent a place up in the, in the mountains and have other friends and folks come over, so, you know, they might have 20 people or 25. So, you know, maybe we look at the, the party, you know, what is a party? And maybe we allow, uh, an amount above the limit that are, are staying there. Also with, uh, meetings, some folks may want to, you know, a small company may want to have a retreat, um, and have 15 or 20 people there, some staying in the house. So I, I'd like us to take a look again at, you know, what exactly is a party, and if parties can be, um, new guidelines a, as far as the number of people allowed on the property, um, at, at any time, rather than just staying there. Other than that, that's, those are all the questions I have right now.
Very good. Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, I, actually, a couple of mine were, were taken there, so I might be reiterating a little bit, but the, uh, uh, parties, meetings, conferences, uh, were brought up and under one line item, and potentially those could be, because, it seems like because the ordinance, the draft ordinance shows the restrictions of how many people, hours of operation, uh, lighting, signage, all that, it seems like we could probably, it seems like that's redundant, uh, specifying parties, meetings, conferences, because there could be small party, small meeting, small conference that would fit within our, our guidelines. It might be something to look at that, uh, language, I would think. And I had a similar, uh, thought about the, um, potentially waiving the 500 for ex- existing registered, uh, uses, and then just starting that as, as once we get the process started, that that would be the, uh, that estimate, or even a lower estimate, and see how it works, uh, to get them in. And I, I thought that was a good idea that Chairman Crocker came up with, with just standardizing the 300-foot, uh, radius for the notice as opposed to 500 feet. And that seemed like that would kind of standardize everything. The rest, every, everything else that I heard sounds like it was just kind of things that we already have that were kind of reasonable, um, that you would need. It, it, these are, these are different than hotels, obviously. Uh, they're also different than single-family residences a bit, and so there, there is kind of an interesting niche that's there that needs to be, um, addressed, and so I think we're heading towards it with maybe a little bit of, a little bit of changes to the wording.
Very good. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just would like to, uh, you know, for next steps, I, I think we've all provided some, uh, very good feedback. Uh, I don't know that this is something that, uh, is ready for a thumbs up or thumbs down vote today. Um, I don't know if continuing this item is appropriate, um, if we need to continue the public hearing. Uh, I'm not sure, do we need to kick it back to the Planning Commission, maybe, to, uh, regurgitate some of the, uh, questions, issues that were raised here? I, I just want to make sure that this is a well-thought-out, um, uh, implementation and decision made by this board, so, um, I would be supportive of, uh, extending it or even, uh, possibly, uh, sending it back to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, based upon the issues that were raised here and questions that were asked. So I, I don't really know what, uh, exact, uh, direction we should move in, but I would be in support of, uh, continuing this.
Very good. Supervisor Sheckland?
Well, I, before you mention that, I, I am in agreement with that, but I just also wanted to, to, in my mind, clarify a little bit. I do believe in, in the, uh, personal property rights, uh, but I also believe that the o, the owners who do not provide short-term rentals also have rights, um, as far as some of these guidelines that, that we are looking at doing. But with that, um, I would, if, if that was a motion by Vice Chair Vanderpool, I would second that, that we, um, continue this and maybe kick it back to the Planning Commission with, with some of the, uh, things that we've brought up today, or just back to staff to bring back to us, uh, with, probably that would be a, a quicker, uh, process, is just put it back to staff to bring back to us with some of these changes that we've talked about.
Yeah, I think, uh, staff, if, uh, anyone wants to comment, I would think that continuing it, um...
Actually, I see county council summon. That's the first time I've ever seen that summoned publicly on our screen.
Shaking it very, her head very vigorously.
Well, um, I, I don't necessarily see the legal need to continue the public hearing, because you're not going to be considering, um, the ordinance that's in front of you now. So I think your direction is you, you could send it, if you feel the need to do that, back to the Planning Commission if you need them to do some sort of further vetting, or you could direct staff, based on all of the public comment that has been made here today and, and that's in the record, to come back with a different...
With a revised order.
With a revised order.
Yeah, I, I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, so that, what I heard as far as, um, discussion points, is that, uh, removing the use restrictions, as far as the, um, as it's not necessary based on occupancy already, uh, kind of, um, you know, deals with some of that. The, uh, and I also heard fee reduction, um, and possibly waiving for existing short-term rental owners. So people already in the process, uh, waiving that, uh, from their requirement, and it knew existing, um, short-term... and new existing short-term rentals would go through the process as outlined, is that...
Consistency of noticing, that's going forward.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, for 300 feet rather than 500.
Just, I, I've got all that for clarity, on the number, when we dropped the restriction for where we talked about no parties or weddings or whatever, stick with the two per bedroom, plus two additional, plus six daytime guests, or are you looking to change that?
Supervisor Townsend?
I, yeah, I was going to respond to that, because I, and I didn't say anything a second ago, I think that the, to me, the one that was already addressed was when we just said parties, meetings, conferences.
Yeah.
Because if you say, I think, you know, the weddings and things like that are going to pretty much always be bigger than what we're talking about, probably not appropriate for the parking and everything in these...
Yep.
Short-term rentals, so I was thinking, my thought was just the one line about parties, meetings, conferences, and to leave the others in place as they were.
But having a limit on those also.
And having the limit with, yeah, with the number that they've already got, but I think the numbers you had in place with the 12, and then the additional six day, total of 18 during the day, 12 at night.
Yeah, and just for my purposes, I, you know, I, it's a little bit, if you look at the septic tank requirements and restrictions, you know, for, off the top of my head, two people, or, you know, plus the two kids, it was like an 800-gallon tank requirement, and then you go up, and then you hit a cap of the square footage, you know, if your square footage gets to a certain level, you're still required to have maybe a larger tank, but you can't have any more people. If you have a 5,000-square-foot house with, you know, 12 bedrooms, there should be able to be 24 people in there, I mean, I don't know that a 12-person cap, I, I think it's a one-size-fits-all approach, I think you almost need a little bit of a case-by-case approach, you can put guidelines in place, but you should allow for an exception if there is a unique property that may not fit within the very strict guideline.
Well, for clarification, then, the basics, what is sizing, is not necessarily on square foot, but it's on permanent bedrooms.
On bedrooms.
But...
But you hit a maximum of no more than 12.
Yes, on that case, where I showed you the table, and then it caps out, if you don't want to have a restriction of a max, you just stay with bedrooms, and if it's a five-bedroom or if it's a six-bedroom, bump it up a couple more, and you, we could just do that and not have the cap on it.
Yeah, I like that, I think that's all.
And I believe too, that, I'm sorry for if...
Oh, no.
But I do believe, like, with Airbnb platforms, you already set an occupancy limit, so how does that kind of...
That's, that's where we're, we're, through this, is that will be setting that, and then that's what they'll be putting up there, that was one of the concerns, the community are people putting higher occupancy than, than what the structure would be able to accommodate, so that was the thing, so everything will be consistent, I mean, the permit will be consistent with what's shown on Airbnb or any other platform.
Very good, any other comments by the board? So I'm here, so just to recap, and then we can get a motion, removing use restrictions, again, grandfathering, waiving existing short-term rentals from the fee, as well as fee reduction for moving forward, and then using occupancy-based, or room-based, for, you know, not having a cap on occupancy, but based on how many rooms as far as the total amount given, as well as the standardization, keep forgetting that one, of noticing down to 300 feet.
And with that, is that something you could bring back in, you know, 30 days is going to be, that should be a very crowded meeting in December, but what do you...
I would propose to push it a little bit further, because that's...
Okay, so bring 60 days, sufficient?
Well, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily do a date certain, we'll start the process.
Right, well, I'm hearing that we just are providing direction, we're not giving an actual motion or anything.
Yeah, that's fine, I would be fine with continuing this, allowing staff to make an update and bring it back to the board.
The final clarification I staff would ask is, are you just directing us to make those changes and bring it back to you, or make those changes and put it back through the PC?
I can come back to here.
I think us.
To the board.
Yeah, we don't need to go through the whole process again, so that would be my motion to continue it and...
No motion, just direction.
I'm sorry, general direction.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Amy got me thinking motion.
I'm seeing consensus, so very good, thank you, appreciate everyone coming today, and for staff's input.
At Three Rivers, I do think you're just as good as Seattle, in a different way.
Excellent. We will now, what about Springville, exactly, it's great, we will go on to, it's, it's two minutes to noon, and I think we're going to try, I'm going to try and get a few items off our list of not timed before we adjourn or break into closed session, so we'll pick up item 44, request from the Ag Commissioner Sealer Department to approve a personnel resolution amending fiscal year 1920 position allocation by adding one FTE. Mr. Tucker?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Supervisors, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, Tom Tucker, Ag Commissioner, thank you for allowing me to address you this morning, you have a couple sheets in front of you on this really large paper, and what I'm here to do is ask if you would approve the Ag Commissioner Department for an additional position allocation for a deputy ag commissioner. This, the reason for that is simply to divide up my work a little bit better, streamline it, allow my deputies to have a more even share of responsibilities, and to answer the public's needs in inspections and the services that we supply. If you take a look at the first organizational chart in front of you, you can see what my department is structured as right now, with 66 full-time employees, you can see that at the very bottom, if you go to the second one, you will see what it will likely look like if you were to approve my request of one additional allocation. Right dead center, you'll see it says Deputy John or Jane Doe, that is, of course, a very lead position, and that, you can see those that will fall underneath that individual, those will be taken out and away from the responsibilities of the deputy right to the left of that individual, and it will simply be very beneficial and helpful to my department and those that carry those responsibilities.
Very good.
That I, I want to hear any questions.
Any questions from members of the board?
My only, no, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I see assistant is vacant, what's the status of that?
Correct, yes, the assistant is vacant right at this point, I'm using this opportunity to try to take a look at the whole department, work at this level, this request that I have before you right now, as soon as that's in place, full steam to getting that assistant, and I will be more than happy when that happens.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Any other questions, members of the board?
Mr. Chair, appreciate you bringing this forward, Tom, and happy to support the structuring of your department as you see fit to best organize your workload, move for approval.
Second. Got a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Supervisor Shackland, were there any other comments from the board or members of the public? Seeing none, please cast your votes. I heard Jeopardy was actually, they're doing a tournament of champions on the, on prime time in January.
That's right.
Speaking of that. That's five, oh.
So that was a nail biter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 45, request from General Services Agency, provide direction of staff regarding temporary and permanent art displays at the Board of Supervisors and County Administrative Offices proposed by Art Selection Committee.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt and Ms. Peterson, Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Assistant Director, I will do my best to make this as fast as possible, so I'm here today to present a proposal from the Public Art Selection Committee for art displays at the Board of Supervisors and County Administrative Office, and it might help if I open my presentations, I was trying too hard to make it fast. So here is an overview, I wanted to point out on each slide, I have some works that are a part of the Government Plaza Art Collection in the lobby, and the piece on this slide is called Sunshine by Ann Vreeland, who also works for the Tullary County Print Shop. So your board approved the public, policy for public art on Tullary County property in April of this year, and this policy provides formal guidance for the county's public art initiative. The pencil drawing on this slide is called Little Cabin Big Trees, and is by Jana Botkin, who also painted a mural at the Tullary County Museum. I'd like to thank Supervisors Shackland and Valero for their leadership and vision on the Art Selection Committee, which also includes myself and other department heads or their designated, depending on the project, and the artwork pictured here is titled American Flag by Mary Jane Yada. So the opening for the first project, the art collection at Government Plaza was in September, and we were thrilled to receive more submissions than we had space for in this collection. The selection committee chose 16 pieces representing 11 talented local artists, and to display in the Government Plaza lobby for the next year, and event attendees chose the Mooney Grove Boathouse by Gary Greeney, which is pictured here as the People's Choice winner. The artwork on this slide is a photograph of the Ladybug Trail by Tullary County Purchasing Employee Elaine Anderson. So the Art Selection Committee, which I mentioned before, also including your Chief Clerk Melinda Benton, we met in October to discuss ideas for art projects here at your Board of Supervisors and County Administrative Office. The proposed temporary display options for your consideration include soliciting various mediums of artwork, such as paintings and sculptures, so potentially installing some shelving, so we can have some different mediums besides just paintings and photographs, and doing that in the lobby and hallway, also giving selection preference to youth artists to encourage them to participate, to dedicate one wall in the lobby for a display where each of you can participate in selecting a piece that represents your district specifically. And in addition to the temporary displays, the committee proposed permanent installations, including a large county seal on the wall inside the main entrance lobby, and commissioning a mural to be painted on the north wall of Conference Room AB. So in conclusion, our requested action before you today is to provide direction regarding the temporary and permanent art displays at the Board of Supervisors and CAO office proposed by the Art Selection Committee, and on this last slide is another piece by Gary Greeney called The Golden Tree, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by members of the board?
That's east.
East, okay, northeast, I pointed, so...
Northern.
Um, go ahead.
Okay, well, I appreciate you bringing this to us, but, and I'm happy to support this effort, I would like us to go a step further, though, and just empower the committee to make these decisions, I don't think that the full board needs to vote on every different piece of art that's, that's selected, or where the next project, where the location is, I think that that's, as far as when I have visioned the committee being created, that they would be making those decisions on our behalf, you know, assuming there's not some huge dollar amount for, for, that's outside of the capital improvement project plan, so I'm happy to move forward with this, and as well as just empowering the committee to take that additional step. Supervisor Valero?
Thank you for giving us that responsibility, the only concern I have is, for example, with art and sculpture, that does create some type of, well, I was surprised, why did you put that, or, so I think this is just like a final, kind of, giving us the opportunity to move forward, so as just a last kind of understanding of where we want to move forward, but if you think that we don't need to bring it to the dais, then I'm okay with that, too.
Well, I, so the caution would be for the committee members is that you recognize that the artwork can be looked at in a different way, so as you're using your judgment, you should be recognizing that there, you know, not everyone may have the same taste, and so I'm okay with you guys making those decisions, but I think individually, as you make your selection and your process, that that has to be part of your determination.
And I agree, and actually, with our last installation, that did happen, you know, there were some differences, and we were able to compromise, so, and we also do have guidelines, so as to not, you know, have anything inappropriate, or anything that can be misconstrued, as so, so I'm fine with us moving ahead and making those decisions as a committee.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Mr. Chair, I agree, I think that the committee should have that authority, just to make sure you ask for my opinion, with that, I would move approval.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpool, a second by Supervisor Shackland...
Although, yes, if we don't have to have vice chairman's opinion.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
I'd just like to ask a clarification question, so that being said, is each supervisor okay with participating and selecting a piece from their district?
Yes.
Okay.
CA, Mr. CAO?
My only question would be, does the art policy prohibit what they're asking to do?
No.
Okay, just making sure the policy was written correctly.
This one is more because we are proposing some permanent displays and asking for each supervisor's participation, so...
Very good, all right, seeing no further public comment, please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll take up item 46, the opening examining declaration of sealed proposals for the sale of 2.26 acres of county surplus real property located at the northeast corner of county's Tullary Acres Professional Building Parking Lot, 5300 West Tullary Avenue, Visalia.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson, Laura Silva, General Services Manager in Property Management, as you mentioned, this matter is to consider the sealed proposals and oral bids for the 2.26 portion of the northeast parking lot at 800 South Acres, this property was determined to be surplus to the county's needs, and therefore, it was recommended that it be sold, with deed restrictions limiting the use of the property to the operations of, excuse me, a combination of food, beverage, and commercial retail that conforms to all local, state, and federal permitted uses at a cash price of no less than $1,165,000. On October 8th, 2019, pursuant to Government Code 25526, your board declared its intent to sell this property, and a notice of intent was published pursuant to Government Code 6063. Sealed bids were due yesterday by 5:00 PM, and we have received one sealed bid, bidders have the opportunity to provide oral bids this morning, provided that such an oral bid is at least 5% greater than the highest legitimate sealed bid. After reading and hearing bids, all of the bids today, staff will evaluate the proposals and return to your board with either a proposal of a successful bidder, or recommend rejecting all bids on December 17th of 2019. With that, I will hand it back to the chairman to open sealed bids and call for oral bids.
Very good. Yeah. Oh, I even have a paper roll. All right, the lead bidder name is from Paloma Development, and the bid price is $1,235,000, and do I need to read off anything else, any other part of that? Okay, very good, so that is the lead bidder right now, are there, at this time, we now invite any interested members of the public to make oral bids on the property in question, any oral bid must be at minimum 5% higher than the highest written bid, thereafter, oral bids must simply exceed the last oral bid, please, would any interested member of the public come forward, identify yourself, and make your bid.
The minimum about of that bid would be $1,296,000, so 96,750.
Hi, John Cashin with Caddis Properties, and that would be my bid.
Very good, so just for the record, the... So just for the record, the Catas Properties has given an oral bid for $1,296,750.
Correct.
Very good. Is there? Is there other, another, any other oral bids that are higher, at least five? Is it still at least five percent? Is now it's open, it's a free-for-all? Excellent.
Oh.
Now I'm the auctioneer, okay. Thank you, Mr. CAO.
Harvey May with Paloma Development. May I ask a point of order on the process?
Yes.
Are terms of the offer considered, or is it simply the price?
What has been stated in the agenda packet was just the price.
Just the price? Okay, and so after this process, does the staff have the opportunity to consider the terms of those offers? Or is it simply based on that price?
I defer to staff. I believe it would just be the price.
Just the price.
As that was part of the RFP process?
Correct, just the price. Staff will only consider the price and the legitimacy of that particular bid.
Okay. I would raise my offer by 5% over the last bid, then, whatever that number is, if she's willing to provide that.
And just for the record, it doesn't have to be 5%.
Understood.
That would be $1,361,587.50.
I'm not giving you the 50 cents.
Okay, then.
So the Paloma Development has given another oral, or has given an oral bid for $1,361,587 even, what I heard. Are there any other oral bids? We have a slide ruler that's out, and it's great. Any good jokes you want to share with us? Supervisor Shucklian?
The existing bid is $1,361,587.
Even. Well, it's okay.
Okay, so John Cash and Catas Properties, $1,375 even.
So we have, Catas Properties has a new oral bid for $1,375,000.
$1,400,000.
And just for the record, Paloma Development has a new oral bid for $1,400,000 even. I don't know what was better, short-term rentals or this, this is, there's a little bit of anticipation. $1,400,000 is the.
$1,425.
Catas Properties has an oral bid for $1,425,000.
$1,450.
Paloma Development has a bid for $1,450,000. I believe that's all. We no longer have any other oral bids. So that will, the last oral bid, it was $1,450,000. So staff, you will come back at the next meeting and verify the legitimacy of the bid. And this board will choose to take action at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, all right. We're going to skip ahead, as I know Mr. Allen has been waiting patiently in the back and getting lots of great information on all things county. And so we will move on to item fifty. Request from County Administrative Office to approve a renewal agreement with Allen Law Firm as contractor and Marcus Torigian as contingency contractor effective January 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, not to exceed $4.3 million and change.
Mr. Chair, thank you for taking up Mr. Allen's contract. I know he's billing us for the hours as he's been sitting here during short-term rentals, and I know he's a thousand dollars an hour, so I appreciate the cost savings to the county.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, CAO and Council. I'm here to present the renewal agreement with the Allen Law Firm for the Conflict Defender Services Contract. This is the second renewal. This renewal is for eighteen months, for the period of January 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Normally, the county will do a twelve-month renewal, but today we're requesting eighteen months, so that it better aligns with the budget year ending June 30th. The County Administrative Office will conduct an RFP before the conclusion of this contract. The monthly amount for Conflict Defender Services will remain the same at $199,278 per month. The ancillary services will remain the same at $400,000 annually. And we are including $150,000 for special circumstance cases. And these cases are outside the scope of the monthly services. And an example would be the Red Soul case. And now I have David Allen here to further discuss his services.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Supervisor Townsend, Supervisor Valero, Supervisor Shucklian, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson. My name's David Allen. I've been part of the conflict panel since 2001. I've been the administrator since April of 2016. Basically, what a little bit of my functions are, is to make sure that the court runs smoothly whenever the Public Defender's Office has a conflict. They could have a conflict for a variety of reasons. It could be a multiple defendant case. They could represent somebody in the past. It comes to a point where they could no longer represent somebody. Then the court appoints my office, and then I subcontract with twenty-four other attorneys, who I assist, and they go into court and actually do the work. Since I've taken over, I've kind of streamlined the process a little bit to make the court system run smoother. I go to court on a daily basis, talk with the judges, make sure that if there are any issues, that I can solve those issues before they become bigger issues. And it seems like the court is running a lot smoother now than it did prior to me taking over. We do have the Red Soul case, just I'll very briefly touch on that. That's basically a case that went down in October of 1995, where Department of Justice and other law enforcement agencies went out and did a gang sweep, arrested eighty-one people. The complaint itself, just for a visualization, the complaint itself was a ream of paper. It was almost 500 pages. The discovery is over 80,000 pages. So if you can visualize sixteen cases of paper, that's just the discovery. And so my predecessor, Mr. Powell, hired or contracted with approximately fifty-one outside attorneys from Fresno, Kings, Tulare County to come in and assist representing the individuals. We're down to about seven people on this particular case. And they, all of those are either facing the death penalty, or they're facing homicide charges. So we're getting close to the end. When I was here, I believe it was in November, a year and a half ago, this board approved $1.1 million to assist in finishing up the Red Soul case, because I assisted those outside attorneys with the District Attorney's Office. We only spent approximately $205,000, so we didn't even come close to the 1.1 million that we kind of figured. So I was able to save the county a tremendous amount of money on that aspect. Since I've taken over, I've streamlined the ancillary services process. And ancillary services are investigators, experts, clothing for defendants when they're in custody. I have, since I've taken over, I've come under budget, just a hair under $200,000. So I, what I'm trying to do is be very fiscal responsible with the taxpayers' money and trying to keep everything as under budget and as tight as we can. Since I've taken over, I haven't come to the board and asked for additional funds, other than the Red Soul case, I'll give a caveat there, you know, the attorney that I am. Other than that, we've been able to handle everything that the courts have thrown at us. We have now additional criminal courtrooms. Since I've taken over, we have two additional criminal departments now that we're still funding with the same amount of attorneys. I don't foresee that changing, where I have to come and ask for additional staff or anything like that. We do have a tremendous amount of death cases. My, the attorneys that I subcontract with, they stepped up to the plate on the Red Soul case. They've represented multiple people, where we didn't have to go outside any additional attorneys to bring on, to a constant additional amount of money. We've been able to handle all of the death cases that we have incurred. And so we're really doing a good job. I can stand up here and say it's all me, but in reality, it's the attorneys that are actually doing the work. They're the ones that are kind of making me look good and making the court run a lot smoother. But I've got to stand up here and say, it's all me because, you know, I'm an attorney. So if anybody has any questions, I'm trying to keep it short, because we are running into the afternoon. So if anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Any questions, comments by members of the board?
David, not to put you on the spot, but I think it was, you said 1995 was the Red Soul?
October of nineteen.
2015, wasn't it?
2015, thank you.
I rest my case.
I stand corrected. It was October of 2015.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments by members of the board or public? This is an action item. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Shucklian. Second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Please cast your vote. The motion is approved unanimously, five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I think to the chagrin of those still out in the audience, we're going to recess into closed session and come back at 1:15. Madam Counselor, we do have need for closed session?
All right, so items A, B, and C are off calendar. Items D through I will be heard. I do not expect any announcements out.
Very good, so we will recess into closed session, and we'll be back at 1:15 to take up items forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-one, and fifty-two. We'll now call the meeting back into order after the recess, 1:15. Madam Counselor, was there any report outs? No report outs, we will move back into our not timed portion of the meeting and take up item forty-seven. I believe we're taking forty-seven, forty-eight together? Excellent. Thank you for indulging us.
Good afternoon, Reed Shanky with Resource Management Agency. You are correct, we're looking at items forty-seven and forty-eight here today. One of the perks, I guess, of being the director is I get to pick which items I get to present on. So I chose this one, we're trying to mix it up a little bit, and yeah, so that kind of backfired on me here today, didn't it?
What do you mean? Spending more time with us is backfiring? What's wrong with the short straw?
So, we're, in the name of transparency, we're presenting on a couple of the different agreements that we're looking to either amend or a new one associated with the High Speed Rail Project. There's two today, and then we were hoping to queue up a third, but it didn't come through in time, so we'll be bringing that to you in the meeting in December, which is the master agreement. By way of background, there's a number of different agreements associated with the High Speed Rail Project. The three in yellow on the board here are the three that we're looking at for your consideration. The master agreement, again, as I mentioned, is the one that we'll be looking at in December. They're fairly routine agreements, two of them are amendments, basically just extending the timeline because of the project has slowed beyond what they had initially predicted. The master agreement is kind of the mother agreement that oversees the remaining agreements, has kind of our general terms and conditions associated with our relationship with the High Speed Rail Authority. Lower tiers of that, there's a cooperative agreement, which is kind of spells out in a bit more detail what the master agreement doesn't. And then there's utility and subutility agreements, which spell out in specific detail the different pieces of infrastructure that the High Speed Rail Authority will be constructing on our behalf, what their obligations are and what we're required to do in association with that. A few months back, your board approved a right-of-way transfer agreement. Because the rail line will be coming through and affecting some of our road right-of-ways, we'll be transferring property to them, and they will be acquiring, on behalf of the county, other alignments or road properties. So that's, the right-of-way transfer agreement spells that out. And then the new one, that's probably of a little bit more interest for conversation today, is the Ownership and Maintenance Agreement. And this is the one that gets into the specifics of who's going to do what with the facilities once they're constructed. So I'll go into a bit more detail on that one. As I mentioned, the third amendment to the master agreement, this is a two-year extension to allow the county to obtain reimbursement from the High Speed Rail Authority. Pretty much all the work that we do, we're submitting costs to them and they're paying back for us. So at this point, there's been no county dollars attributed to the High Speed Rail Project. We've been reimbursed fully for that time. And the other change to this, or that is included in this proposed amendment will be to update some of the high-speed rails and the county's project representative names. So over time, those have tended to change, and we'll be cleaning that up in December here, hopefully. The other amendment today, the fourth amendment to the subutility agreement, this is item forty-seven. There's a series of subutility agreements, 102 through 109. They identify specific improvements that the High Speed Rail will be constructing for us. You can see on the map here, some of those have been completed, namely Avenue 120, Road 24, and Road 40. These are roads that the High Speed Rail Authority is improving, widening, resurfacing for us. They were identified by the county as mitigation, so to speak, for the High Speed Rail Project coming through and impacting some of the circulation patterns out there. So we identified that, and the High Speed Rail has put up the money and through their contractor has repaired those roads or improved those roads. You can see a number of those identified segments are yet to be completed. So that's what we're amending the contract to. Before they go in and actually impact the circulation, they need to bring those roads up to our required standards. And so we're allowing them additional time, because the rest of their rail project has been slowed down a bit. The Ownership and Maintenance Agreement, so this is the new agreement, and this is the one that we were more cautious about. We didn't want to be left holding the bag in any way, and we wanted to make sure that the High Speed Rail Authority was going to put in features and facilities that they would then be responsible for maintaining. So somewhat similar to a lot of the bridges that are over Caltrans facilities over 99, for example. The High Speed Rail will own the bridge, they're building the bridge, they're going to maintain the structure of the bridge. Anything that's over the rail alignment itself, they'll be responsible for maintaining. We just wanted to maintain the roadway, so if we've got a road there currently, we're going to maintain the roadway, so it's really no out-of-pocket or additional expense associated to the project that will get passed on to the county. There's five facilities here specifically outlined in this agreement. Three overpasses and two underpasses. They're all new facilities, so they're going over under the High Speed Rail. They don't exist previously. They're being built to our required standards, so there's certain county standards, and then ash tow, certain roadway widths, that's. ash tow, certain roadway widths, that sort of thing that we're monitoring and making sure that they follow through with. A little bit more detail, again, Tulare County responsibilities is outlined in this agreement. All the roadway services, the striping, the signage, non-High Speed Rail-related project fencing, that sort of thing. But then, kind of the burden is back on the High Speed Rail Authority to maintain the concrete structure, the structural elements, retaining walls, et cetera. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be on the hook for something that they're building because we weren't asking for the project necessarily to go through. And then, just to kind of wrap up, some of the work that has already been done, I highlighted those three portions of roadways out there. Avenue 120 was one stretch where the High Speed Rail Authority has gone in, built the road for us, or improved the road. You can see kind of a midway in construction and then the finished product there. So, we are getting some additional benefits from the projects, from the High Speed Rail going through here. So Avenue 120, Road 24, another road that was kind of a, in a state of disrepair, but they're, because we need this for additional circulation and transportation improvements, they're putting that forward. That one's been completed. And then finally, Road 40, another one. These three roads are kind of up in the Corcoran-Wakina area, and they're working their way south, so we've got a few more locations that are further south there. With that, just to kind of wrap up, the request number one, we were hoping, again, to queue this up so we could do all three today, but this request, this will come in December for the master agreement, again, just a time extension primarily. The subutility agreements, this is item 47, again, a time extension, and then the ownership and maintenance agreement, which I've spoken about there. So, if there's any questions, be happy to answer this. Typically, with the normal projects, these would kind of be a consent-type item, but in the light of the goal of full transparency for the High Speed Rail, we wanted to bring this to your attention and make sure everybody had an opportunity to really understand what we're doing here.
Reed, can you give an approximate value of the work that's been completed and was proposed? I mean, what dollars are we getting to redo these roads?
It's substantial. Probably completed, I'd say, within the range of 10 million, maybe say half or so, and we're looking at that again. And that's just for the county facilities. That doesn't include the overpasses, which are currently, in a lot of places, at-grade crossings of railroad tracks. So we're getting the added safety benefit of, these are now going to not only cross the High Speed Rail alignment, but also the adjacent existing rail alignment there. So, there's kind of ancillary safety benefits associated with that as well.
So 10 million for what's completed and maybe another 10 million for what's proposed?
I'd estimate that, I don't have the numbers in my fingertips.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just curious. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Thanks for the presentation, Reed. I know this is something that has been a long process to get here, and these items come up periodically and are brought to the board for agreement or amendment, but I appreciate this coming publicly for all those in the audience to see today. It's too bad it didn't happen earlier. You know, there's a lot of questions as to whether or not this thing actually gets built, but at the end of the day, what we can say by being collaborative with the High Speed Rail Authority is we're seeing, on the ground, in the county, improvements being made here that wouldn't have otherwise been made. So, I think you've told me before, it's about 14 million in total of the improvements that we've received up to this point, with some additional improvements coming. I mean, coming out of this thing with, you know, over $20 million potentially in road improvements, and if this thing does get built, it's built with the safety of our residents in mind, I think is a win for the county. So, great job. I know it takes a lot of patience dealing with that group, and bringing this forward is something very positive for the county, so thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Members of the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for 47 and 48.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Supervisor Valero. Seconded by Supervisor Shucklian. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you. And we'll go on to item 49, presentation of the Bridge Improvement Program, programming requests for the new bridge projects.
So, once again, Reed Shanky and with me, Jason Vivian here. You all are familiar that we have a large road network and there are a lot of bridges throughout the county. Jason Vivian, one of our lead engineers here, is responsible for really maintaining the highway bridge program. We wanted to give kind of a status update on where we're at with the bridges. There's some cyclical funding announcements that are coming up, so I wanted to kind of give you an opportunity to be involved with that process. And then we've got a bridge that we're recently completing, and so Jason's going to be able to talk about all those things, so thank you.
Thanks, Reed. Good afternoon, everybody.
Don't you think that's helpful?
Okay, just a quick overview of my presentation. So I'll just kind of go through some of the things that Reed was discussing with some of the changes to our highway bridge program. I'll talk about our bridge improvement program, some of our currently programmed projects, as well as some of these newer candidate bridge projects. I'll give you an update on our bridge preventative maintenance program for both our over 20 and our under 20 BPMP. And then we'll talk a little bit about costs, some of our recently completed projects, and then wrap up with a summary and some questions. So, as you may or may not know, Caltrans serves as the delegated authority for all of our bridge projects, for our entire inventory of county bridges. So part of their responsibility includes performing biennial, or every other year inspections of all of our bridges, so all 358 bridges throughout the county. They go out, they inspect, assess, and rate our entire inventory, and they come up with what's like a health assessment using sufficiency rating, and they also will assign a status to the bridge. And that status may be either that it's, the bridge is structurally deficient, RSD, or functionally obsolete. You've probably heard of those terms before. Structurally deficient, you know, may be a bridge where you've got, a bridge that lacks in capacity-carrying ability, it doesn't carry certain types of loads, or maybe you have a structurally deficient member itself. A functionally obsolete bridge would be a bridge where it's, you know, very narrow or you've got a poor alignment, poor sight distance as you approach or come off a bridge. So with the old programming procedures that Caltrans had implemented, the way it works is they assign about $300 million annually to local agencies throughout the state of California. Now, with the old programming procedures, it was a first-come, first-served program, and both structurally deficient and functionally obsolete bridges were eligible. So what ended up happening is Caltrans overcommitted the amount of funds that they could afford, really, and this resulted in a backlog of projects. So what they did is they came up with some new programming procedures. There's still, in terms of the total allocation, that hasn't changed, there's still $300 million allocated annually to the statewide program, but we're now required to submit applications for new bridge projects, and those projects have to qualify for what's called this prioritization list. And essentially, it's just a list that Caltrans publishes every other year, where you're competing against all the other bridges throughout the state. And so whoever really has the worst bridges, that's who gets the money. So back in 2016, we submitted several applications, about 22, 22 applications as part of the 2018 project prioritization list. Of the 22 applications, 16 of those were deemed eligible, and of those 16, we only received funding for two bridges. So it just gives you an idea of kind of where the program's headed and that the money is getting very tight. Those two bridges are our M-109 White River Bridge Project and the Avenue 152 Tulie River Bridge Project. Now, coming up here in November, at the end of this month, we'll have applications due to be on that 2020, the next prioritization list that comes out in March of next year. We'll resubmit the 14 projects that we didn't, we didn't receive funding for from the last cycle, and then we'd also like to add five additional project applications to be submitted as part of the 2020 prioritization list. We think this is, kind of increase our chances of receiving funding, just because the funding is so limited. So looking back at our program, since 2012, we've completed nine bridge projects. Most recently, we have our D-39 Traver Canal Bridge, our D-129 Sand Creek Bridge, and the M-220 Bear Creek-Rancharia Creek Bridge. So, right now, there's 28 bridges in our program. 14 are currently in design or in some phase of design, we have funds for those. We also have the 14 candidate bridge projects that I just mentioned. So if we add these five other projects, we'd look, we'd be looking at about, you know, 32 bridges, 33 bridges, sorry, in our program. So on top of just our standard bridge projects, we also have sort of supplemental projects that we end up having to do some revegetation and restoration, so we've got a few of those. We also have an RFP out earlier this year for consulting services on our M-109 over White River Bridge. You can see in these photos where our crews had gone out and done some treatments on that bridge, just to keep it in working order until we can get this project in place and get it constructed. So of the currently programmed projects, you can see at the top, there's our M-348 South Fort Coia River Bridge. That, actually, we're anticipating will, we're going to advertise here shortly, and we're hoping to go into construction early next year. We've got three other projects that we're going to be, four other projects, we're going to be advertising for construction next fall, next winter. And then, you know, you look at the total amount of funds, we're talking about $57 million in currently programmed projects, and about $2.5 million of that is coming out of Measure R. So here's our 2020 prioritization list applicant projects. Again, you have the 14 bridges, 1 through 14 are those applications we submitted a couple years back, and then those five new bridges at the bottom, number 15 through 19. You can see those bridges are all, have a flag of structurally deficient, so that was another reason why we chose those five, is because we think they're very good candidate bridges that, with a strong likelihood of receiving funding on this next prioritization We also have our Bridge Preventive Maintenance Program. This is just for bridges over 20 feet, and it's federally funded. So there's five different groupings of projects. You've got methacrylate treatments, which is just sealing the deck of the bridges, joint seal replacements, deckwork, spall and paint repairs, and scour and slope protection. So overall, we're looking at about $12 million in work, and again, 1.4 million dollars coming out of Measure R. So out of the 358 bridges throughout the county, 91 qualify for preventive work through the BPMP. And good news, we just received funding, well, we got the word, we're going to receive funding for groups 1 and 5 by the end of this month, so we're hoping to get started on that work here shortly. We also have developed and working on a, an under 20 Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program, so anything under 20 feet in length, this is all funded through Measure R. We received $250,000 to develop and implement a plan, and our, we've got a few inspectors who've been out in the last few months collecting data all across the county, driving our entire inventory of roads, and looking at pipe crossings, concrete box culverts, and timber bridges all under 20 feet. So right now, we're about, I'd say we're probably past the 75% completion mark, but we'll have all the data completed by the end of this year. And objectives, you know, the primary objectives include establishing the inventory for all of our bridges under 20 feet, which we never had before, implementing procedures to perform routine inspections on these bridges, identifying maintenance and work items and their costs, and evaluating the condition and developing a rehabilitation replacement list. So in summary, you've got about $57 million of our currently programmed bridge work, $41 million in hopefully future candidate projects. Our BPMP over 20 is about $12 million, and our under 20 BPMP, just the 250 right now to implement the plan, and we'll be working with our partners at TCAG to go after some more funding once we've identified any bridges that may need to be replaced through that program. Here's just a map showing all of our bridges spread throughout the county. You've got in blue the completed bridge projects, green are the programmed bridges, and the red are the previously candidate, previously submitted candidate projects, and the purple are the new candidate bridges. So pretty good distribution throughout the five districts. So, this is one of our recently completed bridge projects. I think we finished this construction up, it's probably been about a year, I think.
Public art on that.
Pardon, yeah. It's a mural. Yeah, the D-129 over Sand Creek Bridge Project, so this was a one-lane bridge, it was functionally obsolete, but it was scour critical, so this would technically still qualify for funding under the current program guidelines. And so this was the final product after we were done, a two-lane bridge, it turned out really well, took about six months to complete. And then you guys, I think, probably have seen this one, our Bear Creek Bridge over Rancharia Creek. A narrow one-lane bridge, fracture critical, steel girders with a concrete deck, and so we replaced that with a brand-new two-lane bridge spanning the entire channel, and we've got some nice aesthetic enhancements on that bridge as well. You can see there's little kind of blockouts on the pilasters there, and we're working with our arts consortium to develop some art tiles that we're going to set right into those pilasters, so it'll really look good when it's all done. Another photo. So today, we are requesting that your board approve five new bridge applications to be included as part of the 2020 prioritization list. And our goals and expectations are that we take our 14 projects that are currently in design and advance those into construction over the next six years, that we can hopefully program 19 new bridge projects and get those going within the next 10 years, get our BPMP, our over 20 BPMP design finalized, and get a sizable portion of that group work completed in the next five years. And then for our under 20 BPMP, initiate procedures to develop routine inspection and maintenance, and establish a list of potential rehab and replacement structures. And then lastly, I've got a point here about coordinating with Front Water Authority, I think I've presented on that topic in the past, but we'll continue our coordination with Front Water regarding the subsidence issue on the Front Current Canal. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you go over the currently programmed projects? We, I know it's, we upfront the, for the bridge program, we upfront the dollars and then we get reimbursed after the, after it's complete.
Correct.
So, for currently programmed, we've already got the AOK, the, to move forward with those that, you know, if, once we complete and we use our money, then we'll get reimbursed.
Reimbursed, correct.
So we're just really looking at, so that, so we have approval for 57 million-plus dollars worth of bridge projects right now?
Yes.
Very good. This is my question. Any other questions, comments? Members of the public? Entertained a motion? Moved by Supervisor Townsend, seconded by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you. We'll move on to item 51. Talking about airwinds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we need another break?
Yeah. I'm sure by now you are all out of candy, and I'm standing between you and a nap. Everybody eat your Snickers now? Oh, there you go.
This is the best one, water, hey!
Good afternoon, board members, CAO, council clerks, Denise England, Water Resources Director. I'm here today to give a quick update on the Integrated Regional Water Management Disadvantaged Community Involvement Program for the Tulare Kern Funding Area, and also to amend Provost and Preacher's contact, contract to include some additional activities. So just as a recap, the DAC Involvement Program objectives, as laid out by the Department of Water Resources, includes working collaboratively to involve disadvantaged communities, community-based organizations, and stakeholders in the integrated regional water management planning efforts, increase understanding and identifying water management needs of disadvantaged communities in that funding area, and to develop strategies and long-term solutions to address disadvantaged water, disadvantaged community water management needs. So the program was funded by Proposition 1 via 3.4 million carve-out for the Tulare Kern Funding Area. The program began in February of 2018, and there was a number of eligible activities that could be proposed under the funding program. A needs assessment was the only requirement, so we are doing a needs assessment, and then these other activities, which includes a disadvantaged community education and engagement program. This is to engage disadvantaged communities in the integrated regional water management planning efforts, develop projects, which could include design engineering and construction, project management, and grant administration. So in the Tulare Kern Funding Area, there are seven IRWIM groups. Those are the Coia River Basin IRWIM, the Kern County IRWIM, the Kings Basin Water Authority, the Pozo Creek IRWIM, the Southern Sierra Regional Water Management Group, Tulie River Basin IRWIM, and the Westside San Joaquin IRWIM. And the Westside San Joaquin is actually in two funding regions, but for this program, we've treated them as though they're all in the Tulare Kern area. So this is it on a map, so as you can see, it encompasses all of Tulare County, all of Kings County, the majority of Fresno County, and the western portion of Kern County. Your board created a project advisory committee to provide key program guidance and decision-making for the program. The membership is one member, which is selected by each of the seven integrated regional water management groups, one disadvantaged community member selected by each integrated regional water management group, one tribal member for the full funding Regional Water Management Group, one tribal member for the full funding area, and then an alternate for each of those members. So total of 15 folks. We've had some trouble filling the tribal member seat, so we've had some tribal involvement, but we have not actually been able to secure an ongoing member to participate. And just to note, the cost incurred by the PAC members to participate in the project advisory committee are not funded by the program, so it was up to the IRWIM groups to decide how they were going to pay for that activity or the participating member. So consultants currently working on the program, Provost and Pritchard was selected to do project management. There was some nexus from the previous 2012 Tulare Lake Basin Disadvantaged Community Study that they had also assisted with. They also were tasked with the needs assessment early on. And then we have amended their contract to include the Disadvantaged Community Education and Engagement Program, and then today propose some project development activities as well. And how that has played out is Provost and Pritchard has then subcontracted to Houston Engineering to do some work on the needs assessment. I'm going to show a web tool that they've developed. And then Self Help Enterprises is doing the education and outreach, education and engagement piece of the program. And then other purchasing agreements have gone to some other consultants. Basically, we said, "Communities, you already have relationships with consultants and engineers. If you want to keep your regular engineer, we'll just contract that way to keep that efficiency." And so other contracts have gone to GEI, Four Creeks, D. Jasper and Associates, Keller Wegley Engineering, the Sierra Resource Conservation District, and AM Consulting. So the needs assessment is something that was required by the funding source, and it was based on an update of the database from the Tulare Lake Basin Disadvantaged Community Study that was completed in 2012. New data was brought in specifically to storm water because that was one component of the required needs assessment that was required. And then an update of the existing data. As technology has progressed, various state agencies have also updated their databases and made them more accessible, and were able to link in. So we're not fetching data and updating it manually. We're able to sort of automate some of that. And then a framework for data storage and organization, as well as a web portal, was developed based on the priorities of the project advisory committee. So I'm going to showcase that tool for you now, provided the link is still up and working. Ha, it is. Okay. So this is the landing page as a video here that you can click on to see how to work the page. It is currently in test mode, but it is being updated and revised, and it will be live, and so then that can be shared with you and, and others. The, the vision is to have various levels of login, so somebody such as myself would have full access. A public member may only be able to view, and then individual IRWIM areas or people involved with specific communities could actually have access to go in and update information on the backend, and I can kind of showcase some of that. So the first is a DAC IRWIM DAC Dashboard. And, loading, loading. So you can ask it to go by IRWIM, or we'll, I'll do that for this one. So if we select the Quia IRWIM, it would zoom to the Quia sub-basin, and it provides a table that sort of indicates DAC status, and whether they're unincorporated or incorporated. It provides some population, a number of communities, and then you can generate a report. So a IRWIM group could use this, and they're able to get a printed report, and sort of get live data that provides a variety of information. So this tells us that in Lynn Cove, there's 500 people, there's 100 connections, they have groundwater, but there's no public water system, they're unincorporated, they're a disadvantaged community, and their MHI is 43,500.
MHI is...
Median household income. So that's what establishes whether you're a DAC or a severely disadvantaged, or as you can see in some of these others, not disadvantaged. And then you can go to a community water quality dashboard, and can provide sort of the same, the same thing here. You can select, all of them, you can select by county as well. So it not only helps the IRWIM groups, it also helps the county. And say we wanted to see all of the communities with arsenic, and you can select a timeframe, so let's say the past three years, and you can see the results. And again, it provides a chart, and then you can drill deeper and see water systems out of compliance, and you can open the report. So a really robust tool to help those developing projects, and wanting to look at strategies to address water quality, as well as water quantity needs in the various, in the full funding region, but it could be drilled down to county or IRWIM group. And then this tool looks at the densities of private wells. So they're color-coded based on densities. Trying to get my bearings here, sorry. So the green are lower densities of water system, or of private wells. But as you can see, like in East Porterville, we see a high density, and obviously, this information needs to be updated because most of these wells probably have been abandoned, and the community has been tied into the city of Porterville. But this, this map also includes water elevation contours. So you can see, you can see, and the, there's a feature, oh, here we are. I had, just had to drill in further. So it pops up a box that says, okay, this community is East Porterville, here's the population and the median household income, and the number of connections per water system, which is actually a number of private wells that should actually be updated. And it provides a density of how many wells per section. And so in a future drought, and also provides a median measurement of the depth of those wells. So in a future drought, we could use this tool to assess who might be at risk of developing a dry well. And then the final tab is a community needs ranking, and it provides information on various aspects of the water system in the community, and, and scores the systems based on that, on those scoring. So you look at Tulare County, you can see that we have 10 total communities that represent a high level of need. So if we were to want to target our highest level of need communities, this report would be helpful. And again, you can ask it to generate a report, and then it gives you the details of those communities. And then, so we can look at the Plainview Mutual Water Company, and it drills down to a report specific to that community. So really excited about this tool, and what it means for both counties and the IRWIM groups to address needs going forward. And chances are, this is going to start from the beginning, but we won't do all of that. So the next component is that DAC engagement and education piece that Self Help is working on. They've provided some surveys, some inventories, and they've identified some gaps and needs. This predominantly has focused on drinking water. The next step is to look at wastewater. They're going to do some septic system surveys, and sort of the same inventory, and identifying gaps and needs. And then from that, that work, they'll develop additional materials for outreach, both to IRWIM groups and DSCs, and those could be websites, pamphlets, brochures, or any number of other outreach materials. The final activity is project development. And when we originally put together the proposal and the program, we thought that most folks would want or would need planning and engineering-type work. However, when we put the request out to, to identify projects, we were given a whole variety of various projects that needed money for various reasons. So those includes application assistance for Round 1 IRWIM implementation. So within this timeframe, DWR has, has solicited projects for the round, the first round of Prop 1 IRWIM implementation funding. And those applications typically cost anywhere between $15,000 and $25,000 per project. And obviously, disadvantaged communities don't have that money to put together their applications. So in the past, counties have helped. Some IRWIMs can absorb the cost of the disadvantaged community project, but it's always a challenge. So this time around, we had some projects say, hey, our project is ready to be constructed. We just need assistance with the application funding, and we've been able to do that. And there was some feasibility studies, some environmental documentation, some engineering. We had a few projects that were actually ready for construction, so we're able to provide funding for that. There's a, a school district that needed some upgrades to its arsenic treatment plant, so we're able to fund that. There's some metering and SCADA reading equipment that needed to happen, and so we're able to fund that. And then finally, land acquisition. So actually, Easter Rossi is looking at purchasing their future well site with some of this money, because it's much easier to access than some of the other dollars that are available out there. So the way the money was split, we set aside $2 million for project development activities, $250,000 per IRWIM region, so seven of those equals $1.75 million. And then the remainder was put into a competitive pot of $250,000. Any money left over from the other activities will be funneled to the competitive pot, and you'll see that the projects we have there are scalable, so there may be opportunity to give them some more money in the coming months. So these are the four projects that were ready to go for the Round 1 implementation funding. And so we, the PAC awarded $75,000. One was 15, the other three were $20,000. So that was a, a good thing. They'll get their projects funded, hopefully, through this round of implementation. And then the following slides, I won't go through each one, but the following slides list the other projects, which is currently total 1.5, a little over 1.5. We are still waiting on some projects from Kern and the Southern Sierra. They've had some trouble getting their projects forward. They have until January to bring projects forward. If they don't, the remaining funding will go into that competitive pot. And then these were the three projects. As you'll see, they were all Tulare County projects, and I think that was part of your board's decision to move forward with this funding program, was to make sure Tulare County communities had a good chance at getting some of the funding. And so I think we were pretty successful in that. So the city of Lindsay, Sultana, and Pixley all received projects. The Sultana and Pixley projects are scalable, and so should any additional funding come from those, we have budget surplus in any of those other categories, it would come here and be split amongst these projects. So our next steps and anticipated schedule, project development is underway and should continue through the fall of 2020. I really anticipate most of that work to be done in the early, by the early summer. We're still waiting on those projects from the Kern and Southern Sierra groups, and those will be approved, should they be submitted, but in January. And then if there's any funding remaining, that'll be reallocated in late January. Additional projects will be approved, or augmentation of approved projects will happen in March. And then in January, the PAC will also be considering to add additional features to that web tool. If there's additional things they'd like to see, there's some money left that maybe we could do a few more things. And certainly, if you have any feedback today, I'll happy to take that back as well. And then the DAC Education and Engagement Program will continue through fall 2020. The grant terms and the final report is due to DWR about a year from now, in January 2021. So this is just a list of milestone meetings, and we're kind of at this, finishing up the needs assessment and having it accepted by the PAC. There's a preliminary needs assessment available, as well as this web tool. So the request today was to receive this update on the Tulare Kern Funding Area Disadvantaged Community Integrated Regional Water Management Involvement Program, and then to approve an amendment to Tulare County Agreement Number 28482, with Provost and Pritchard to increase the amount from $915,300 to $1,725,566 to include the disadvantaged community project development tasks. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comment.
Thank you, Denise. I appreciate the updates and bringing this forward. I think the online tool, that looks pretty, pretty slick. That's, that's a pretty cool tool. I noticed on there, you know, just based on the, what was the critical needs or the most critical needs, at the quick glance, that wasn't necessarily what is being funded, or what the projects are. So, you know, what type of projects are eligible? Is it just whatever shovel-ready, and whoever's moving forward, and, and who asked first, those are getting funded? Because again, you know, some of the ones that were listed, I mean, you know, Plainview was number two on that particular list, and they're not anywhere here. So just trying to figure out how, how that works.
Sure. So I think that the, the two activities are running parallel. So the web tool wasn't fully developed when projects were started to be selected, and because of timing, if you have a big engineering project, you want to give the engineers as much time as possible. I think a few things restricted projects coming forward. One was the amount of funding. There was only $250,000 per IRWIM group. So $250,000 to Plainview. They've done their feasibility study. They know what their solution is, but they need $5 million to move it forward. I think this program provides a good model to the state of how, if you allocated money regionally, how the region could come together and prioritize projects, and certainly, that tool helps to inform that process. And so maybe in future rounds, we could get another lump of money and maybe move bigger projects forward. The other piece is that the selection of projects was really based in the IRWIM groups, and so they decided which projects to put forward. And in the case of Plainview, again, they may have, you know, the, the bigger project is on the list, but maybe there wasn't a small component to bring forward. So the map tells us what the big needs are, and, and we can even include estimates of that need, but those aren't necessarily what's, what fits within the funding that's, and that's an ongoing challenge. We have that challenge with state board funding, you know, because our priorities may not be the same as the state's. And then just the, the amount of funding available is restrictive as well.
Okay. So yeah, the, ultimately, we need implementation dollars. This is, more or less, there was, you could have some implementation funds here, but these are more for planning and project design.
That was the idea. And we certainly got different projects that did fit within. We're doing a, an extended pump test for Lemon Cove, so that doesn't, that's something that doesn't fit into any of the other funding categories, and so we were able to pay that. Like I said, land acquisition. We were pretty impressed with the IRWIM groups and the DAX coming up with pretty innovative projects that don't really fit anywhere else, be able to get those done.
Very good. Other questions?
I'll burn that one off that you've got there.
You'll bring that one off. I told you.
I said, I'll use it, though. I'll use it.
Oh, you'll use it. Go ahead.
I'll use it now, so it'll go away. Hey, Denise.
It'll go away.
Okay. On, under the fiscal impact, so all of the, or under the request, I should say, for the $915,300 to the $1,007,25,566, that all comes from the Prop 1 DAC IRWIM grant?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Somewhat unrelated, but this was at the, the California Economic Summit, and one of the breakouts that I attended a couple of weeks ago. We were talking about groundwater and, and all of the different agencies that are now, you know, created, local agencies have been created. Just any thoughts on if, whether the IRWIM group might get lumped into a groundwater sustainability agency, or CV Salts, or vice versa? Is there going to be, do you anticipate any type of discussion as far as merging these, you know, they're all looking at some type of groundwater issue, but they're not, but they're all siloed, as far as they're, they have specific purposes as far as how they're looking at it?
Yeah. So statewide, that certainly is a conversation, and I will actually be speaking the week that you all are at CSSEC. I will be in San Diego at Aqua, and I'm going to participate in a panel at opposite ends of the state this year.
Oh, darn.
I'll be participating in a panel that looks at just that, regionalization, and, and how do all of these programs come together. I think tomorrow, I'll be in Burbank at the Integrated Regional Water Management Roundtable of Regions, and I think the future of IRWIM is something that's going to be discussed as well. Historically, IRWIM has been around because water bond funding has been funneled through that. And so going forward, if the legislature still views IRWIM as relevant and a good place to funnel that money, whereas CV Salts and Sigma are regulatory in nature. I think, you know, from a local perspective, I attend all of these meetings, and they're all typically the same people. We're just talking about a different topic. IRWIM may be the better fit for Sigma versus the other way around, just because Sigma is localized, and not everybody is subject to Sigma, whereas IRWIM pretty much covers the, the whole of the state. But to date, that hasn't happened. That merger hasn't happened. I know CV Salts is also looking for a place to land, and the first place they went knocking was at the GSA's doors, and they said, nope, can't handle that. And so to the best of my knowledge, IRWIM hasn't been approached with that, but that may be a place that that may land as well. We also have the coalitions with the Irrigated Lands Regulatory Program, so... We also have the coalitions with the Irrigated Lands Regulatory Program, so certainly at the statewide level, that's something that's being talked about. Locally, I haven't heard much support of that. I think everybody sort of views them as all separate things and dealing with them in silos, although that's pretty inefficient. Maybe moving forward, Sigma's sort of breaking down some of those barriers, it may be able to all come together.
Yeah. Personally, I think that it's, it's a bit short-sighted.
Bunded?
To not see the efficiencies of being able to put these together, and even if one's developing projects, there's a funding mechanism to help move the projects forward.
Right.
So anyway, this is an aside. All right. Any public comments?
Come on!
Way in the back.
They're still awake.
You behind the table.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Entertainer motion.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Supervisor Townsend, and second by Supervisor Valero. Quick draw. It's all good. Cast your votes, and the motion carries 5-0. Thank you. All right, our last item today is item 52. Board member requests, board members may make a referral to staff to have a staff, to have staff place a matter of business on future agenda item. Supervisor Valero.
Yes, all right. So I'd like to revisit our county flag policy, and so that we can potentially insert the purchase of this item by school districts, county government, and the general public. So my hope is that we can have something reported to us for possible consideration in the future.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Shuckland?
Well, I was going to bring up the same issue, bringing back the flag policy. I agree with, somewhat with Supervisor Valero regarding school districts and other government agencies within Tulare County, but I do disagree with the general public having access to the county flag for fear of misrepresentation, but we can discuss that if we bring the policy back.
Very good. So requests by two members, bring the policy back, future agenda, and specifically looking at the sale of, of the flag. All right. Any other future agenda items? Members aboard? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.